I'd like to welcome everybody to the February 12th meeting of the New Bern Board of Aldermen. At this time, would you join me in a prayer? Heavenly Father, we just ask that you be with us tonight as we do the work of the city. You promised it where two or three are gathered, you would be in our midst. We ask that you humbly be with us as we do those things as a governing board that will be pleasing to thee. In your name we pray. Amen. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and innocent.
Madam Clerk, would you call the road?
Alderman Dingell, here. Alderwoman Harris, present. Alderman Astor, here. Mayor Outlaw, here. Alderman Kinsey, here. Alderman Bess, present. Alderman Odom, here.
Okay, everybody's here, so before we get going, does everybody give the agenda tonight for the changes?
May I, did you note that?
Yes, ma'am, go right ahead.
Yes, that the, there's item agenda, I'm sorry, number, right here?
Number 12?
Yes, about parking, and we are removing that due to the fact that the survey was not completed by the downtown merchants, so that will be added.
Do we need a motion second then?
No.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else at this time? Okay, we're gonna go to petitions of citizens, and at this time, the first one is James Woods, if you would come forward and give the, your address and name for the record. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, my name is James O'Woods Jr. I stay at 1903 Country Club Road here in New Bern. Good evening to the mayor and aldermen. My concern is, I seen that the survey is for the state without surveying First Street, and I'm coming before the board that you guys please rethink this. I have read it in a paper where y'all want to change to kind of where it is downtown on Broad Street. The buses use that road during the week for the school. I stay off Country Club on the far end, and when I see all that traffic, that's my gateway to the city, and a lot of people's gateway to the city is First Street. If you planning to change it the way I think that you are, like Broad Street, it's gonna really mess up the traffic. It's already a traffic problem on Broad Street when people are trying to get downtown. My church is on Broad Street. When we try to get out on Sunday mornings or in the evening times, it's a hassle. So can we really, really think about before we change First Street to a one-lane road with pork chops, that we really look at that, please? Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. This time, our next petitioner is from Damon King. If you would please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Damon King? King? Did I mispronounce your name, sir?
No, you had it.
Oh, okay, thank you.
My name is Damon King. I'm a resident here in New Bern, 112 Pella Lane, and I am here as part of the representation to ban the box. Ban the Box is a petition that concerns bringing the check, whether you have been incarcerated and arrested, or you have any kind of felony or past convictions in your life, to remove that from the applications for the businesses here in the city. And that's just pretty much what we are here to represent tonight, and I would love to have you all to really consider that. And Ban the Box is not saying that anyone that has a felony, everyone will get a job, but what it does, it gives an opportunity for those who may have skills that are very exceptional and qualified for those positions to come forward and be able to interview and have a decent opportunity to put in the other stack instead of circular file 13. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, Emily Henson.
Good evening, Emily Henson, 518 New Street, and I'm here to tell you about New Bern Preservation Foundation's 33rd Antique Show. Now, as you know, the convention center is closed, and we, at first, we thought we won't be able to have a show, but you can't just reschedule an antique show because dealers have certain places they, you know, they go, and so you can't, the dealers may not be able to come back. But we found the perfect place. We're going to be at Carolina Colors at their pavilion. The people at Carolina Colors could not be any nicer. They have just turned over their whole building to us. The antique show will be this coming Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. The Friday and Saturday hours are from 10 o'clock until 5 o'clock. Sunday hours are 11 until 4:00. On Saturday and Sunday, between noon and 3:00, with a ticket, you can bring one item to be, we have, we'll have an appraiser there who will appraise the item, tell you about it, and give you a ballpark figure of its value. We hope that all of you will come and bring all your friends. I think you have a card here. There are 25 dealers, and they are from everywhere, from New York to Florida. Thank you.
I look forward to seeing you Friday morning.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. David Boz?
Hello, sir, my name is Daniel Boz. I'm an attorney with the North Carolina Justice Center, 224 South Dawson Street in Raleigh, North Carolina. Here to speak strongly in support of the council's consideration of the Ban the Box policy. It's been transformative in over 200 cities and counties around the country, including 12 in North Carolina. As the speaker before said, not only does the city send a strong signal about second chances, but the experience of Durham and Wake County and other places that the Justice Center has helped the city and counties adopt these policies, they've actually gotten more skilled, better workers, and so it's really a win all the way around, and I appreciate the council taking up the issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Catherine Adolf?
Good evening, Mayor Outlaw, members of the Board of Aldermen. My name is Catherine Adolf. I reside at 210 Metcalf Street, where my husband and I have lived for the past 14 years. It was only recently that many of the downtown residents have become aware of a change in the New Bern Noise Ordinance that was adopted by this board on May 22nd, 2018. The change which this board adopted about eight months ago legally removes the right of residents and persons within the C1, C2 zoning district downtown, as well as those within 100 feet of those districts, to lodge an enforceable complaint for specific noise issues disturbing the quiet, comfort, or repose of said New Bern residents. Not only residents, but visitors to our city in hotels, boat slips, bed and breakfasts are excluded from seeking relief for excessive volume noise in the central business district of our city. The C1 and C2 zoning districts are bordered by the Neuse River, Trent River, Hancock Street, and part of the community north of Broad. Those who have become recently informed about the change in the noise ordinance are quite rightly surprised, concerned, and upset that this change quietly became law, having been crafted by downtown businesses with the assistance of their attorney, with little or no notice to people potentially affected by the change. As additional residents are now becoming informed about this change and the impact it may have on their peace of mind to enjoy their residence and their current powerlessness, we petitioners will be respectfully returning to this board to address this matter. I am here tonight to present to you over 100 petitions signed by residents who live in the C1, C2, and downtown historic district. These are not anonymous Facebook folks. We petition petitioners request that the current noise ordinance be changed to stop excessive volume noise. Our primary concern is about the level, the excessive volume. One resident's smartphone decibel app registered over 110 dBs one evening in front of a downtown restaurant bar. When sound is amplified at decibel levels so loud that some residents cannot watch television, sleep, or read a book without noise, something is very wrong. I am one of those residents. My husband and I live on Metcalf Street in a residential zone, not in the central business district. Almost every Friday and Saturday night, we now find that we must call the New Bern Police Department to lodge a noise complaint, and the police prevented by your recent law can do virtually nothing. For those who want to continue fostering a beautiful, high-quality, and vibrant downtown, there must be a balance between residents and businesses. Let us work together to find a win-win solution that allows music, art, and businesses to thrive while respecting the folk who live in this downtown, who support the downtown businesses. I will leave these petitions as well as additional attachments for you to review. They include a cover letter, the petitions signed as of today, a C1, C2 zoning map, just to refresh yourself, the New Bern Code of Ordinance with your noise ordinance, and specifically Exemption 9, which exempts. I'm happy to answer, any questions?
No, but Kathy, I do, as the Alderman of the board, I want to thank you. I have the utmost respect for you and the residents, and especially for all that you've done for our district. The only point I would like to make is that I did work with residents that were in the immediate downtown area in crafting that. It was not crafted by an attorney for the downtown businesses. It was crafted by our attorney, and it was duly notified in the public, on our agenda, and talked about Mr. Watson had input into it, the Bed and Breakfast had input into it because there had been some complaints, so I'm, I want to invite, yes, and I do, I do want to invite you all back. We didn't put it as an agenda item because Mr. Watson recently had some surgery, and he asked that I postpone that so that he could be in it, but I appreciate you coming tonight and giving these petitions, but it is an important issue, and we will be taking it up, so thank you for bringing it forward.
Appreciate that so much, Alderman.
Thank you.
I reside at 2005 EF Tompkins Lane, New Bern, North Carolina, zip code 28562. Four years ago, I relocated to New Bern, the city of New Bern, and I put in five applications for entry-level positions. I was never called. It wasn't due to the fact that I did not possess the skill set or the educational background, pretty sure it was just to the simple fact that I had to check that box. Tonight, the Ban the Box team is here to petition the mayor and the Board of Aldermen to consider the banning of the box. It's important. It's the right thing to do, and it offers fair opportunity to employment for our returning citizens. This act by your, by your board will improve our public safety, it will reduce our collateral costs of incarceration, and it will return our returning citizens back to our wonderful taxpaying system. Mayor Dana Outlaw, you asked me last year, Greg, I want to do more with reentry, and you did. You signed a petition making the second week in April, reentry week, by way of proclamation. Now, I ask you to add to that resume the banning of the box. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name's Edward Kaplan. I've never been to one of these things, I don't know what you want to know, but I'm wearing this t-shirt. You know, I know the way that businesses are when you apply online especially, they want to know, they want to hear certain words that funnel you into the, you know, the crew they want to pick from. Then they obviously also have the other ones where if you don't answer it the right way, you're automatically cast aside. And I've been one of those. I don't know, it's just, you know, keep people down, it's just another way to help them justify to going back to what they were. You know, everything is so intertwined and, you know, everything, I don't know, I mean, there's just a lot, a lot going on, and it's pretty simple with this. You know, if you want to give people a chance, you got to set them up, you know, for that chance, but if that box is there and that box automatically disqualifies me, you know, whether it's actually that way or just the algorithm that goes through, I don't know, it just doesn't work, just doesn't work, it just helps people go backwards, and community ultimately goes backwards as well. So, ban the box.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, did you get the address?
I did not.
Okay, it's 110 Rim Street. Mr. Kaplan, is that correct? 110 Rim Street?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Christina Bonham? Anybody by the name of Christina out there? I might be mispronouncing her last name, but Barham? Christina? Going once, going twice? Tiffany Therese?
Good evening, my name is Tiffany Tracy. I live at eight, yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
I live at 1809 Tryon Road. My husband and I moved here three years ago from Colorado. I'm a former ex-offender, I'm also a former school teacher, I have a degree, but I have had the hardest time finding a job because almost every application I've filled out has, are you convicted of a felony? And even though I have been, that doesn't mean that that's who I am anymore. A lot of us out here that have these t-shirts on that we're supporting this initiative because it's important that we get second chances, and if we're given that chance, I can speak for myself, I'm so grateful to get a job that I'm really going to be a sensational worker, but if I'm not given that chance, it never happens. I'm really excited to report, I'm going to start my very first job tomorrow. Yay! But it was efforts of mine to really go around Ban the Box that I got it, because the application that I filled out online did have that, check the box for felonies, so I've learned now that really just to get ahead of that, go into the place, introduce myself, so I've kind of learned how to jump through those hoops, and I just wish those hoops weren't there, so I really want to encourage everybody to please ban the box.
Thank you.
I've never done one of these either. I'm probably at the wrong, well, anyway. I have had the honor and the pleasure.
Angel, could you state your name and address?
Yes, Angel Johnson, 1610 Dole Hunt Street, New Bern. I have had the pleasure and the honor of working with people who are turning their lives around, who have been in jail, and I have made suggestions, what if you apply here, what if you apply there? And when I see their faces, it is heartbreaking to me, totally, I can't, they won't hire me. I mean, I have so much respect and honor for people who are turning their lives around and who are eager to show that they are, and that they are more than willing, but they go, they won't hire me, I got to check the box. And it's just heartbreaking to see that, to see them leave patterns behind, leave habits behind, do all that hard work, and it is hard work, because I've seen it, only to get discouraged because they have such a limited pool to choose from to obtain employment. I don't want to see that set them back, not after they've worked so hard. So I'm asking you, please ban the box. Thank you.
Thank you. Has everybody had a chance to look at the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as is.
Second.
Motion and second, is there discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I have a concern with the, I'd like to know how long did it take the clerk to do the minutes?
Well, let's, I mean, I'm not trying to interrupt you, but let's, let's, best not germane to the consent agenda, would it be the?
New business.
That would be maybe new business?
That'd be fine.
So did, we had a motion and a second?
Right.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye. Aye, all opposed, the same. The motion carries. At this time, number nine, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Item number nine is presentation of longevity certificates. Employment services recognized at five-year increments roster has been included in your packet of all employees who are eligible to receive a service certificate for the period of July through December of 2018. Some of these employees are here with us tonight. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Kaprowski, our Assistant Director of Human Resources, and obviously, we will, as usual, ask y'all to come down and thank our employees for their efforts in getting their certificates.
You also come in?
Yes, sir. Please.
Mayor, and members of the board, as Mr. Stevens said, tonight, we're recognizing employees for their various lengths of service to the city of New Bern in increments of five years, and we're recognizing those individuals with service dates between July 18 and December of 2018. And first, we'll start with Joshua Sterling, five years of service. Then we have Marilyn Carter, 10 years of service. Richard Howard, 10 years of service. Jeremy Barbie, Fire Department, 15 years of service. Robert Garrison, Police Department, 20 years of service. William Smith, Fire Department, 20 years of service. And last, we have Richard May with the Fire Department, 30 years of service. And did we miss anyone? Did we miss anyone? Thank you, and we have refreshments, if you would like to just adjourn for a few minutes for a few cookies and?
A second.
Much to say, all very much to say aye.
Thank you.
I want you to resume the meeting at this time. Item number 10, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Tonight, we're, item number 10 is a presentation on the North Carolina Global Transpark Authority. Many of you know the gentleman who is here to speak to us tonight, Alan Thomas, former mayor of Greenville. He's now the, the director of the North Carolina Global Transpark, GTP. He was scheduled to be here with us in July, but had some issues with an illness, I believe, and wanted to come back tonight, make sure that he was able to present this to you tonight. So I think he's got some great news with things that are going on with Global Transpark, as well as some, some future things, so I'm going to turn it over to.
Mayor Thomas, we really appreciate you being with us tonight, and I want to tell you on a personal note, City Manager Stevens and I really appreciate your leadership in our Metro Mayor's Association. I think you were treasurer?
Yes.
Yeah, and we appreciate, I think we made a lot of headway with that, and thanks for your leadership in that area.
Oh, one other thing, Mayor, I want to also thank you for your leadership during the storm. I know I was on the phone with you about 3:00 in the morning.
Yes, we did.
The night that it hit, and you were a godsend in trying to mobilize resources that we needed at that time, and I appreciate you, you know, all your leadership and the things you did there at the, the transpark to get the resources that we needed here quickly, so thank you.
Thank you, Madam Alderman, and thank you, members of the board, and Mr. Mayor, and some may or may not know this, but I was born not too far down the road here. So I was born here in New Bern, North Carolina, so this will always be, be my home, so we always know that. But it is indeed an honor to be with you this evening, and I know I'm on the clock, sometimes I talk too much, so I apologize in advance, but I wanted to, I was excited to be here, and I had kidney stones back in July, that's what happened to me. So everybody say a prayer for me, that was not a good, that was not a good day, so that, so was not able to make the meeting that day, but it is great to be able to come back and meet with you again. Part of my mission, and as you mentioned, Mr. Manager, I was the mayor of Greenville for, for three terms, and it was a great honor to serve there in Greenville, and, you know, you don't really get to know your city till you walk every, every block, and I went through a lot of shoe leather, as they say, and I love that community, but we also know that we're all in this together, you know, across eastern North Carolina. I'm really excited. I took a leap of faith after being elected to a third term, after much consideration, after an offer to come in and take, and take control of an asset, which has probably been underutilized for many, many years in eastern North Carolina. It was not an easy decision, it would have been easy not to have done it, but I made the leap of faith after some prayer and much thought and consideration to take over the North Carolina Global Transpark. And I did that because I'm proud of eastern North Carolina, and I want my children, and your children, your grandkids, to have a future here. And to do that, we have to take aggressive steps towards forward-thinking opportunities in this, in this region, and we can't apologize for it. We can't apologize for the past, we have to focus on the future, if we look at the assets that we have in our hand and make the most out of it. So that's all the preaching I'm going to do tonight, but the rest of this is, I wanted to give you guys a quick update, and we've been traveling around basically what I call the road show, going to city council meetings and commissioners' meetings and kind of giving a quick footprint about the transpark, and much that people really don't know, so hopefully this will be an educational experience for everybody listening in, and everybody here is a member of the board. And the great thing is, I'm not coming here asking for a thing, we're just here in fellowship and partnership for opportunity across eastern North Carolina. So Colleen, I might have a little video element here in the beginning, so a quick listen. So you'll see there, we talk about the birthplace of aviation and the future of airspace, and that's really what we pitch all across eastern North Carolina. This is not a solo pitch for me for the transpark, my mission is across the entire east, and we have an aerospace corridor. aerospace corridor, which we share here with Craven County, also with Lenore, and also with Wayne County. And the state of North Carolina itself is number four in aerospace manufacturing in the entire country. So a lot, a lot of information here. We'll try to go pretty quick. The, and we'll talk a little bit about the Transpark itself. It's 2,500-acre multimodal park. We have the 11,500-foot runway, which is the second longest runway in the eastern United States, only second only to JFK's longest runway. So two miles long, tremendous asset on a global level, exceptional. We also have a very unique 404 Army Corps environmental permit. We have a shovel-ready, close to 6,000 acres. If they did something right when they first started the park, it was the process that it took to get that in place. We just renewed that for another 10 years, I'm happy to say, this past year. We have rail with Norfolk Southern running right to the apron of the runway. We have a transload facility, which allows companies that need to get their product on rail, whereas previously, they might have had it by truck, much more efficient. You guys know all the involvement with the interstate connectivity with highways and what's going on around this entire region, so important. We're also a foreign trade zone, number 214, which also I think Craven County is a part of. And we are the NC Opportunity Zone, which is a huge new financial vestiture opportunity, which we're designated for that county. And I'm sure, you know, New Bern has that as well. So the Transpark itself is a very large footprint. And it's very well utilized, 22,000 flights at the Transpark this past year. And we have the second-largest aircraft in the world, the Antonoff AN-124, flies in on a regular basis. That's the aircraft you saw in the video. It's an amazing, amazing aircraft, amazing to see. We have some people just a popper who want to see that. And what they do is, we, our largest tenant is, it used to be part of Boeing, and it's called Spirit Aero Systems. They make the Airbus, the A350, the entire center fuselage of that aircraft, they make at the Transpark, and the wing spars. And this aircraft flies in, which is literally from the top of the tip of the tail, six stories tall. We cram that in this aircraft, and they fly that over to France. So we fly internationally out of the Transpark all the time. Again, most people have no idea the scope and scale happening just 30 miles up the road here and the opportunities that are involved. Who works at the Transpark? We have 1,500 employees at the Global Transpark currently, the updated number. We have 12 tenants. Almost 90% of the people that work there are in private industry, Spirit Aero Systems. We have logistics companies. I already mentioned about Spirit and their size. They have close to 800-plus employees there. Mountain Air Cargo, the MAC, which you see, we're the, they're the largest maintenance and repair operations for FedEx. So they repair the freighter aircraft for FedEx right there at the Transpark. And doing all of this great beehive of activity are 10 employees that actually work for the state. Everybody else is working for these companies. So we have a tremendous amount of activity. And where do they come from? This is the first question I asked when I started doing my due diligence on the Transpark. These dots show you where the people that work at the Global Transpark and more specifically Spirit Aero Systems, over 21 counties across eastern North Carolina. You notice the dot there in Craven County, 32. And when we say 32, we say, I say 32 families, because that's what that means to me, the impact on their entire family and their community. And we know there's many people that live in Pitt and many counties across the east, that they get in the van at 5:00 AM, and they drive to Cherry Point every day for work. That's what we do in eastern North Carolina. That's just the fabric of who we are. So you guys know a lot about the little item on the left, kind of showing the, where we fit, where we're oriented across the east. The image to the right is what we call the elastic mile, is kind of where we're oriented across the entire east. Now, the Transpark has really suffered in the past from not really being marketed at all. So when the big push for us this past year, I just started a little over a year ago, is significant marketing. And what are we marketing? We did a great amount of cluster analysis and planning around the Transpark itself. And we're focused on four key areas: aerospace, automotive, the defense industry, agribusiness and food science, and government operations. And I'll be happy to say, the past year and a half or so, we've made significant strides forward. You may have seen the announcement in December about the new electrostatic paint facility, the first of its kind here in eastern North Carolina. What that means is the largest influx of jobs at the Transpark probably in about a decade. And also, this facility allows us to do high-end painting of multiple sizes of aircraft. And it also allows me to go to Massachusetts, Connecticut, and northeastern states and recruit them to move down here. Because right now, they're sending their aircraft, maybe doing repairs there, but they're sending their aircraft off to Nebraska, or Maine, or to Canada. They have this type of work done. Why not do it right here in eastern North Carolina? Spirit Aero Systems just made a massive new investment there as well. And so they're spending their own money, close to $60 million of more investment there with Spirit. So this is the electrostatic paint facility that I mentioned to you guys. This is being built this year, brand-new, $11 million facility, a lot of great jobs. It'll be up and running here, hopefully, late 2019 or 2020, more than likely. But we're excited about what that means. So a lot of checkmarks there. I'm tight on time, so I won't run through each individual one of these. But, you know, we, all we asked from the legislature when we came to them in terms of moving this asset forward, and they mandated me to put a strategic plan, is, you know, let me show you the items and make progress, and let's do this thing one step at a time and work together. So we talked about the foreign trade zone, which we're a part of as well. Here's our largest tenants, Spirit Aero Systems. You notice to the top, a massive facility. They have over 850,000 square feet under roof, tremendous operation, great deal happening. This is so key to us and Mayor and Members of Alderman. We need to focus on this military workforce. You know, we have 22,000 exiting military and spouses beyond that in eastern North Carolina. We need to keep them. They're the real backbone of economic opportunity along with our native base here as well. Huge opportunities here. We need to do more about that. So here's the Transpark itself. And Alderman Bingle, you mentioned, this is what the Transpark looked like during Hurricane Florence. We had over 2,500 military and first responders encamped at the Transpark, living for over a month. We went from, you know, kind of a slow-paced activity to having operations from 35 states across the entire nation, here dropping supplies, rescuing people in the middle of the night, whatever it took, whatever we needed to do to stand up operations, making rescues all the way down into South Carolina, people from far away as California, Alaska. And the image to the bottom right is what we're still doing. We have over 250 FEMA personnel still at the Transpark today. And what they're doing is processing housing units for people who have been flooded out. So we're still on that mission to this day. So what did we learn from this? 5,000 rescue missions, 930 air operations. We mentioned about 35 states represented, 2,600 engagements. And what's happening? One of our goals at the Transpark is what we want to create a disaster response simulation base. So we don't have to relearn these issues every time. It's a concept we came up as kind of a, you have to have an exit strategy after you finish a big event like that. What did you learn? So we want to have a simulation center at the Transpark that we can bring local, federal, and state assets together. So the next time this happens, they're right here in our backyard and ready to help us. So training and innovation, a big part of what we do at the Transpark. We have a campus that we train people and educate people every day at the Transpark with these institutions that we work with. The old terminal there, some of you may have flown out of there way back in the day when it used to be Piedmont Air, 30,000-square-foot terminal. So we're actually taking it out of mothballs. I'm moving my office back in there. We're going to take the other 20-plus thousand and put it what we call the international innovation hub. We're going to recruit companies to come to eastern North Carolina. Maybe they don't necessarily need to build a manufacturing facility just yet. But to get their footprint right here in a foreign trade zone in the east, we think is extremely important. So some of these are some illustrations of what we hope that to be like. You also see the drone technology there. We're working very closely on a global level with drone technology, very big part of what we do. So again, I'll try to run through this briefly, guys. Sorry for a longer presentation. But we're all about innovation and innovation at the Transpark. We put our money where our mouth is and continue wanting to move forward. If you want to take a look at our website and learn a little bit more about the Transpark itself, ncgtp.com. And really, we know what it boils down to and what I always pitch, what really matters, quality of life. We have a huge advantage. Don't forget the special qualities of eastern North Carolina. I never just pitched the Transpark. I pitched New Bern. I pitched Greenville. I pitched Beaufort. I pitched the entire east. Because we want people to find where they want to be comfortable called home. Because we just want to put their jobs and their industry here in eastern North Carolina. And so we'll wrap up with this. My goals, and I always like to state whoever I'm presenting to, is a five-year stability with the Transpark, focused strategy, you know, don't be shy, global connectivity. That's what we need to do across the east. Progressive marketing plan, partnering with everybody and anybody, and measurable, accountable action steps. And that's what we're being held to. So, and that wraps it. Mr. Mayor?
Mayor Thomas, I remember when this was being considered. I think we were in stiff competition with Laurinburg in particular, some, an area over there. And I remember Hinson Barnes had a lot to do with this. He was in the legislature at the time, and of course, Governor Beverly Perdue. But again, you know, this is such an asset and such an opportunity. But we almost didn't get this because there was a lot of other areas. And you know how we've glossed out so many times to the triad and other areas. But again, Hinson Barnes, as I recall, is, you remember that little history?
Yes.
Yeah. There was a lot of people worked hard to make this happen.
Well, the key is, we've only scratched the surface. And anybody that's ever run a business, I don't care if it's a tree stand, a stand on the side of the street selling something, or a major business, you have to innovate with the way the economy changes. And that's what we've done with the Transpark. It's why in the last year and a half, we've had unprecedented growth. And let's just say, you ain't seen nothing yet. The e-commerce opportunities we're pursuing right now, we're very excited about for all of eastern North Carolina.
I have one thing for you, Alan.
Yes, ma'am.
We talked about, you know, connecting the east and all these beautiful communities. And you're missing the one piece. And I preach this all the time, and you'd be the one person to help me. It's called passenger rail.
Yes.
Rail is there anyway.
It's already existed.
If we could move people from New Bern to the Transpark, to, down to Morehead, to the port, to Raleigh, you know, why is it only Raleigh to Charlotte? Why can we not serve the east? And I believe that this Transpark could be the thing that would spur it on. But it would help people get to jobs. It would keep cars off the road that don't need to be on the road. The east, if the northeast really boomed when passenger rail became the only mode of transportation. And I see that as a way to really connect what you're trying to do and get workforce and other people connect the bases. It's there already. So I'm going to put that in your hands and challenge you to see if you could make that happen. Because I think that would really connect us all and really help boom the Transpark, but help us in New Bern. People who want quality life and want to live in New Bern, but there's job opportunities in Princeton or anywhere else along that line, I think would be really helpful.
And most of these rail lines are owned by NCRR with a long-term agreement with Norfolk Southern. And we know as the business model has changed for Norfolk Southern, and they're really struggling a bit, there may be opportunity in the next three or four years. But we need to put a concerted, that's why we call this Quad East. Remember that? Remember that term we've thrown around for a while? You know, not ask for money, but us working together as a region, a large region, and put a focus on these type of multimodal connectivity. That's what I call it. That's how they do it in Europe and other countries that are really working together as a region. So, but thank you for your time. It's good to be here. And I appreciate it. And anytime we can collaborate, you guys know I'm ready. We're excited about what FRC East is doing and over in Havelock, what New Bern's doing with your expansive opportunities. And again, we, we've only scratched the surface here, guys. I'm excited about it. I'm really excited about our future.
One other thing, I know that it's almost like there's some competition between the I-42, Highway 70 to the coast, and the 264 to Norfolk. And I know that you're looking long-range. What do you see as impact when, with both of those, I mean, particularly the connection to Norfolk and the Transpark?
It's phenomenal. And one of the things we talk about, if I'm in Dubai, or you're wherever, if I'm pitching eastern North Carolina, they don't care where your port is. They just want to know how quick can they get products. So we erase county and state lines. Norfolk is just as important to us as Morehead. Because we know Morehead is kind of a commodity port, whereas, you know, Norfolk is, you know, large, supertanker-type port. So that road connectivity, I cannot express enough how important these major road corridors are for the future of eastern North Carolina. Infrastructure is everything, and it doesn't happen overnight. So what you are fighting for now is for the future of your kids and grandkids. And we need to do that like others did for us. But, but Mayor, I agree, those corridors are extremely important. And also, the expansion of the port at Morehead. I'll tell you, guys, that could be a deep-water port if we ever got the focus behind it to make it happen. That's the only port in North Carolina that could accomplish that. And again, it would take a large regional effort, or others understand the bigger picture.
Who may else? We thank you for coming.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Stevens, item number 11.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, item number 11 is presentation by the Craven County Board of Elections. Melanie Ray is with us tonight. She's the Director of the Craven County Board of Elections. She will make a presentation that covers cost analysis of the city's election process. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Ray.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to come and speak to you today. I would not be fiscally responsible elections director if I did not let municipalities know of the cost of their elections and areas where they could maybe save some costs or be more fiscal responsible with their budgets as well. The presentation is pretty very, very simple. And you have a copy of it. It's a cost analysis from changing from a nonpartisan election runoff method, which you have elections in October, and then if there's a runoff, it's in November, to a nonpartisan plurality election method, which is basically just one election, which would be in November only. In 2017, there were 552 municipalities in North Carolina. Out of the 552, only 23 still use the nonpartisan election and runoff method for their elections. And that's from the North Carolina State Board. Your 2009 elections, your total cost for October was $24,867, which was 579 per voter, 423, 4,293 voted. The total cost for your 2009 runoff election was $16,745. Basically, October, you pay alone. November, you share the cost with the other municipalities. You were doing 377 per voter out of the 4,443 that voted. Your total cost for elections in 2009 was $41,612. 2013, your October 2013 was $39,145, with 720 per voter, with 5,437 voting. Your November 2013 runoff was $16,384, with 211 per voter out of the 7,762 that voted. Your total cost for '13 was $55,529. If you had had one election in November 2013, the cost would have been $20,918 total, would have been approximately $269 per voter, savings of $34,610. 2017, your total cost for October, $36,454, $967 per voter. November 2017, you didn't have a runoff, so your total cost for '17 was $36,454. If you had had your election in November with the other municipalities that had their elections in 2017, your cost would have been $24,628, 653 per voter, a savings of $11,826. Here is a depiction of the cost in a different format. Basically, also in red are your absentee voting expenses. Another way to cut costs is to not allow absentee voting, but I'm not recommending that you do that because in the city of New Bern, it is very popular for absentee voting, which is also male and early voting. But that is another thing that you do have an option to opt out of. Currently, we only have four municipalities that offer early voting in their municipal elections. So when you have an election runoff and those municipalities are in that, that cost would be shared between the four currently. 2021 estimate. If you have an October election estimate, $45,215. If you have a runoff in 2021, this is taking an estimate based on two races, basically, a mayor and another Alderman race. It would be about $19,500 in 2021. Total estimate would be about $64,715 for 2021. If you just had the one election in 2021, it'd be only $27,150, which would be a cost savings of $18,065 if you just do it against the October election, or $37,565. The $37,565 is if you did have a runoff, the total of the two. So it's pretty, pretty simple. Advantages of doing this, cost savings, obviously, not paying for two elections in a year, you're sharing some of the expense by having only one election in November because you're sharing it with the other municipalities. You only have to budget for one election. Also, more voters voting. And you'll see in your materials, the, your voters increased in the November runoffs because people are used to November elections. It's also on their calendar. It's an election day. It also increases, as I said, and there are the numbers, in 2009, you increased. '13, you increased when you had runoffs. Also, less confusion on the part of the voters because they're already used to November elections. I also looked up the different methods of voting that you have available. Obviously, you use the election runoff method, which is October, then November if there's a runoff. Another option would be a nonpartisan, simple plurality, which is the November only. Another option would be partisan elections, which will be held on the Tuesday with everyone else. But your first primary would be held in September. And if you have to have a second primary, it would be in October. So you could have three. So you could have three. Or the nonpartisan, nonpartisan primary. That means it's not partisan, basically by a party, and that is, it would be held in October, just like you currently do, and then the second, then the primary in general would be in November. So that one really is not much different than the layout that you have now. But basically, it's pretty simple. It's just a presentation to let you know there are options out there for you to take if you move from two election method to the one. And so that's what I'm here today, is to present those numbers to you.
Melanie, question for you. What other municipality in Craven County has an October election besides New Bern?
No one.
No one. We're the only municipality that has it in October. All right. Second question I want to ask is, I guess the reason we do this, if we decide to change it, we need to talk about it now. Our elections are not till '21.
Correct.
But this has to go before the General Assembly.
Correct.
So we would have to discuss it, vote on it, and then send it to our delegation where they would have to put it in a bill and do it that way.
Yeah, she would have to have a resolution, then you would have to get your county, your city attorney involved as well, then you'd have to go to the legislature, and you'd have to change your charter and your amendment and that kind of stuff.
And can it only be submitted in a long session, or does it matter any time?
Any time, from what I understand.
Okay, so it doesn't have to be the long session?
I remember Oldham Bingle, we looked some years ago at going to November. Mr. Deeks, do you remember exactly some of the impediments to not doing that? We feel like, as I remember that, November would have better voter turnout, and we're all very remiss on the marginal turnout levels that we had.
Right.
So you remember anything about that, Mr. Deeks?
I remember the discussion.
I mean, we discussed it.
I don't think it was November. We were discussing more, we wanted to do staggered terms.
Term limits.
And term limits and all of that, and we were rejected on that. The only thing we were able to accomplish was the mayor having a vote.
I think at a time when we found out that unfortunately, the General Assembly thought that term limits were unconstitutional, that we decided just to back off and didn't do anything from there.
That's correct.
One thing I do have a question about, you say 23 out of 552 cities or municipalities have nonpartisan or runoff methods.
The same way.
That's the only ones left.
Yes.
So from that, if you were not talking about nonpartisan versus partisan, is there not quite a substantial number of cities that are still doing runoffs?
Not runoffs. You have, you have some that are doing the partisan primary in the general, and you have some who are doing the nonpartisan primary and the nonpartisan general. But there are only 23 that do the election and then the runoff.
But was, there was a decision, seemed like a United States Supreme Court decision on the city of Kentstown, trying to go from partisan to nonpartisan. Do you remember that?
I don't because that's in Kentstown, but there was a push.
That's a model and a case.
There was a push, you remember, to try to get all municipalities in even years. There was a bill submitted for that as well. So you do have a lot of, you know, of leeway to some extent. There are some municipalities, they run on even year schedules instead of odd year schedules. So this is just something that I just wanted to present to you in this format so you can just be aware that there are other options available to you for cost savings.
And there was a model which they implemented in, Alan, was it Chapel Hill or one of those cities up that way that they actually did the second, first, second, and third, and a second to come in first, depending on who you first, second, and third?
Oh, you're talking about random choice voting?
Yes. You're not, you're not, are you going there?
No.
No. No, sir.
You stepped right out, so I want to make sure we're.
So you may want to explain that for people who don't understand plurality and majority.
This is the expert here. I want to define it.
Yeah, so explain to them the difference between majority and plurality.
The November plurality, which is basically one vote wins, whoever wins, wins. That's plurality.
Where majority, you have to have 50% plus one.
Mm-hmm. Yes. In your method, in the October, if you have someone who is less than 1%, they can request a runoff, which would be that they would, your names would be on the ballot in November for those particular wards or mayor or whatever person requested that runoff within their rights.
If you look, if you're second by less than 1%.
Correct. If you're second, less by 1%. And you didn't have that in 2017, but you didn't have a lot of opposition in some of the wards as well, so.
How do we, anybody have any thoughts on this? I'm, you know, we had such a low voter turnout, we've talked about this for years. I would really like to start the discussion of moving in '21 to a November election because I'd like to see us get more people to the polls, get us more excited about what we're doing, so that, you know, we had three wards where no, we had no competition or nobody stepped up to run. I think it's time for us to start discussing this, trying to move forward. I would fully support us going this route. I think it would help our voters, and it would save the taxpayer money.
Yeah, it would save some money.
It's, you know, let's take that $20,000 and buy your chess pieces for.
I can let you know, in the October 2017, you only had an 18% turnout versus your registered voters overall. But in your wards, like in District 1 ward, out of the registered 3,200 voter, it was the, Sabrina, you won by 12%, 12.74% of your registered voters. So you're still, you're still winning your, your ward by low margins. And Dana, overall, versus the registered voters in the mayor race in October, only won by almost a 12% as well. So it, it's, a winner's a winner, whether it's by the one vote or by a percentage or whatever.
Regardless of what this board decides to do, I want to go on record stating that I would like more voters out. I would like more opportunity for our voters, and I fully support us, one, saving money, and two, getting more voters out by going to Election Day in November. And that's all I'm going to say about that.
Oldham and Adam?
Yes, sir, Mayor. I think if voter turnout is one of the goals, I think you'd almost have to look at moving this to an even year. Melanie, what's, what's the percentage difference in an odd year versus an even year turnout?
Oh, you're, actually, City of New Bern has really high percentage turnout in their municipalities, but the average, and I'm from Cleveland County, we saw 8% and lower in our municipality years. So you're doing really well at 18% turnout in one of your municipalities. Obviously, you look at a primary, you're talking in the twenties plus is the 44 in the presidential year for a primary. Of course, presidential is six, you know, 60%. So you are talking more turnout in municipal years, which is why there was a push for all the municipalities to go to the even years.
Okay, does the board want to look into an ad hoc, is there enough interest in this that three Oldham will volunteer and do some research on this, report back to the board?
My only comment would be is, I kind of understand what Sabrina, Oldham and Bingle are saying in regards to saving money and getting more voter turnout. I'm a big proponent of voting. The only thing I would not want to change on whoever is in the ad hoc group is the one-stop early voting because that would definitely.
And I wouldn't recommend that because this City of New Bern uses that very well.
Okay.
Okay. We have any volunteers that would like to do this? Or do you want?
I'm happy to do it, but I don't see any faces turning towards me or saying anything. So I don't need one more committee meeting if it's, it's, I don't see any movement, at least by three of us. It would take four to make the vote, to make it happen. But I really think, go home and think about it, pray about it, but I think it's an important step for the city and one we really need to look at. And let's, you know, we are looking at the future of the city. Let's get into the change. Many of our people who moved here and come here are used to November elections anyway, and they're just, November is Election Day. I think if we really look back in the history of New Bern, look at our original charter, was it July, Mr. Attorney? We used to vote in July. It used to be Election Day. So things have evolved along the way, and I would really like to see us go to November, let it be clean, you know, let, let it just work that way, so.
If we were doing even years, and we were doing them in November and piggybacking off of the state races, would we not, wouldn't there be a good savings on runoffs if we, could the cities?
You wouldn't be have, you wouldn't be able to have a runoff if you did in the even years in November.
Well, that's what I'm saying, there would be a cost savings.
Oh, yes.
From piggybacking on the state, so.
Would they pay additional if it's a state race? No, we'd still pay the number.
No, you would still pay for your ballots, yours set up, just like in November, you have shared expense. It would be shared expense. There are some expenses that are constant, but then there are some specific.
My flavor would be even year, November, and hopefully be, if it was able, you know, depending on if there was runoff on the state level or whatever, that we'd be able to coordinate the runoff in conjunction with the state. I don't think that would happen that way. But that's my flavor, so, you know, I don't know that I'm at the, I like nonpartisan.
I do.
And I'm not really just yet into this plurality thing, but I am interested. I mean, I've always thought we, I would do anything to encourage more voter turnout.
Well, at any time, you know, if you need numbers or things, I can definitely help and assist in that, so.
Hey, well, at this time, I.
Well, I'm going to let y'all think about it, and I'm going to bring it back under new business. So think about it, pray about it, but I'll be back.
And if there's something you want me to look at, in the meantime, I surely can do that for you.
Well, we appreciate all you're doing.
Thank you, Melanie.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I think we are not doing item number 12, so at this time, we'll go to item number 13.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the board, at this time, we have a presentation on the African-American Heritage and Cultural Center of New Bern Project. Tonight, we have with us a familiar face, Ms. Beckton, and she represents the African-American Heritage and Cultural Center, and she's going to do a presentation on the center's vision and the group that has gotten together to discuss this location, along with the celebration of Juneteenth in 2019.
Good evening, everyone, board, mayor. Good evening. It is indeed an honor and privilege to stand before you all this evening. I am Carol Vivian Bonner Becht, and I reside at 3,005 Pepper Corn Road, New Bern, North Carolina. And I'm here this evening to introduce the African-American Heritage and Cultural Center of New Bern. I will also be making a request. Early last spring, a small group of leaders from around New Bern came together, and we agreed to meet and to get to know each other and to discuss our shared vision of increasing the awareness of eastern North Carolina's African-American heritage and culture. We each had personal experiences and expertise to share. We engaged other individuals who are professionals in their field. They helped us determine how to achieve our goals. These individuals joined our discussions throughout the second part of 2018 and into the beginning of this year. And they included, are included, John Wood, Preservationist, State Historic Preservation Office, North Carolina; Nancy Van Dolson, Executive Director, Imagination Station Science Museum, Wilson, North Carolina; Bill Myers, Executive Director of the Oliver Nestus Freeman Roundhouse Museum, Wilson, North Carolina; Bill McRae, Executive Director, Tryon Palace; Sharon Bryant, African-American Outreach Coordinator, Tryon Palace; Angela Thorpe, Director, North Carolina African-American Commission, Raleigh, North Carolina. Now, as you see from the names here, each one offered a different approach to achieving our shared goal. And through our discussions, we came to a point of clearly stating our vision. The African-American Heritage and Cultural Center of New Bern will be a dynamic center that actively presents the historical impact and progression of African-American heritage and culture in eastern North Carolina. We also established a statement of our shared goals, which will be refined as we move forward. But for right now, our shared goals is stated thusly. The African-American Heritage and Cultural Center of New Bern will collaborate with local, regional, and state organizations and individuals to present a broad spectrum of the African-American experience in eastern North Carolina. Now, this will include an oral history library, creative performances, seminars and lectures, exhibitions of artwork, including murals, artifacts, and personal collections, along with food and live art events. As we met our planning team, as we met, our planning team expanded. Our founding and current planning team includes alphabetically Kathy Adolf, Sabrina Bingle, Maria Cho, Jim Copland, Tahira Copland, Carrie Galliver, Bernard George, Jamisa Harris, Mickey Miller, Linda Monk, Larry Rosentrop, Ben Watford, and me, Carol Bonner Becht. In addition to engaging other leaders in our discussion, we worked methodically to formalize our work to become a nonprofit organization based here in New Bern. So we established a fiscal agency partnership to allow receipt of donations. We are voting now on a board of directors, and we will go on to build a board of advisors. We are submitting paperwork to North Carolina and the federal government to become a 501 3C nonprofit organization. We have always recorded notes of our twice-monthly meetings. The notes are reviewed, edited, and accepted at subsequent meetings. We have adopted bylaws and guiding policies. And beginning this year, we will partner with other organizations in the region to present our program. The first 2019 program planned by the center is Juneteenth. Now, Juneteenth is a national celebration of the emancipation of enslaved individuals following the Civil War. The national celebration of Juneteenth is June 19, 2019. We plan to celebrate Juneteenth on Wednesday, June 19. And we are requesting the use of 408 Hancock Street for the event. Today, we received the required parks and recreation department forms from Mr. Foster Hughes, and these forms will be completed and submitted this week. With short presentations, the goal of the event is to, is celebration with music, light food, refreshments, and more music. This, the event will take place, the celebration of June 10th, of Juneteenth will be June 19, 2019, 6 to 8 o'clock PM, 408 Hancock Street. Music, light food, refreshments, and yes, again, more music. It's an evening to meet, mingle, and celebrate. The center will manage, with the center, the African-American Heritage Center, we will manage the logistics of the event, and that is the food, beverage, music, and presentations with partners from the community. We accept responsibility as required by the city and its Parks and Recreation Department, and tickets will be sold to control the number of participants and to cover expenses. We come before you this evening to request the city's support for this event and support from Parks and Recreation Department. This support may include, but not be limited to, cleaning the main meeting hall and restrooms, setting up chairs and some tables, providing receptacles for trash and recyclables, helping with any electrical power needs, and then doing cleanup and trash recyclables removal at the end. In 2019, the center's program planning committee will coordinate this June 10th, June 10th event, and we will collaborate on other events with organizations and groups in our region that share our goal of presenting the historical impact and progression of African-American history, culture in eastern North Carolina. Thank you for your attention to this presentation, and now we welcome your questions.
We have questions. I would like to start out, tell you, Mary Pedron did the Fire 22, and Oldham and Bingle and I were very involved in, in the fire museum for a while, and the biggest crowd we ever got, we had had two showings of the Fire 22. got, we had had two showings of the Fire 22, which, you know, the majority of impacted the African American community. You got something?
Yes. Isn't this plan in the Renzo Plan?
The CNI?
The CNI?
No.
First of all, I want to give thanks to everybody on the committee, especially Carrie. You have done an incredible job, the whole committee, but of keeping the notes and keeping everybody motivated. I mean, you're wonderful with your emails and reminding everybody, but the dedication of this core group of people, myself not included, I was there at the first meeting, but it's just been incredible. I just wanted to say that, and I appreciate all the work you've done, and what I believe this group is trying to accomplish is there is such an incredible shared history of not only, you know, what happened, but music and culture and just other things that happened in the life of this community, in the African American community, that it was time for people to come together and start collecting that information and finding a way to share it. So, I'm really proud of their efforts and everything that you have done and coordinated, and you really stuck to it, and I appreciate all the work that's done. This was the brainchild of Alderman Harris, who came to me and said, you know, will you support this and can we get it going? So, I am, you know, the idea of a Juneteenth celebration is awesome, and I fully support what you're asking us to do.
But, Ms. Beckton, was that not a part of the CNI plan?
No, sir.
That wasn't part of that there?
Do you want to make any type of motion on this?
I'll make the motion.
That's later. I'm sorry, didn't mean to.
What is it that the city can become a partner with you on?
Well, we are requesting the use of 408 Hancock, number one, and...
For a center?
Yes, sir.
For the event on...
For the event.
For the event on June 19.
Of June 19, 2019, for Juneteenth celebration.
Okay, and where are your plans for the museum to be?
That's to be determined. Right now, we're just doing Juneteenth celebration.
So, I can address that directly. I'm Carrie Gallagher. This is not viewed as a museum that is a static location that will house or archive memorabilia or articles or artifacts. It's viewed as a center that will move around the community as needed or move around eastern North Carolina as needed to support events like Juneteenth and others that come from the community and from other organizations. There are so many organizations, we acknowledge, that do this work and struggle to have visibility for it, and there's an opportunity, I think, for us all to network together, to raise the awareness and to increase the visibility for all the events. So, specific to your question, we've been meeting at 408 because it's a great location to be, but we, as we sat there and talked about Juneteenth, we also agreed it would be a great location to start that event. Where we will be physically in the future is to be determined. Right now, we're in a P.O. box downtown.
So, what would you like for the city to do?
I think there are opportunities that you become aware of, as Alderman, and we want to make sure that you consider us a resource in making those ideas move to action. Whenever there's an opportunity, we'd like to be one of the organizations that you bring forward to collaborate with you, to make ideas become reality. So, however we can help the community rise and to bring these issues that we've identified to a higher level of awareness, we'll be right there with you.
Well, I'd like to support your organization, and I believe in what you're doing is a great thing for the community.
Thank you.
Madam Obama?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Just a quick question. I want to clarify, on one of the slides, it says, I want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly.
Sure.
It says the center requests approval from the council to...for support from the New Bern Parks and Recreation Department to set up tables and chairs, counsel on use of outlets and speakers and music, clean main hall and restrooms, and provide trash recycling containers for use throughout the event. So, you're asking the city Parks and Recreation Department to support that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I just want to make sure that our department is aware of that.
Yeah, in the paperwork that we received from Foster today, from Mr. Hughes today, it's very clear that we have to specifically list what we need as far as setup and then break down afterward. And I have to say, Parks and Rec has been very supportive since, I guess it would be like last October, am I right about that, that we moved our meetings from downstairs in the conference room over to 408?
I think what Alderman is alluding to is that we do not actually want to use personnel to do this because it will actually cost the city money. We will do it ourselves, but we want to be able to have the tables and chairs and the recycles to do what we need to do.
Madam Bass?
Good statement.
Have you reached, I know you're engaging in, you know, for resources right now and you're planning stages and everything, but have you ever thought, or have you reached out to Tryon Palace, and you have, in order to maybe be able to have some programs or something there with them?
I have to say that Sharon Bryant initially was very supportive of the work we're doing, and it's a mutual support. You know, we would be supportive of the programs that are occurring throughout the year, as well as during Black History Month, of the programs offered by Tryon Palace. But in meetings that we've had with Bill, Bill McCray, who's the Executive Director of Tryon Palace, he's been very clear that as long as it's not a fundraising event, but it's an educational event or an opportunity for the community to come together, his space is ours, from his words.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we support the African American Heritage and Cultural Center to utilize 408 Hancock on June 19 from 6 to 8, and that there will be tables and chairs, trash cans and things for us to be able to have our basically coming-out event. That's about it.
Second. Carrie, if you have a motion, second, is it further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Motion carries.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much for your vote. I'd like to acknowledge other people that are sitting here with us this evening. This is Maria Cho, Kathy Adolf, Ben Watson, Watford, and also Carol Beckton, who made the presentation. Are we missing anybody? Is Bernard in the room?
I don't know.
Ah, he came in behind me there, and Bernard George, and these individuals have been at the table from the very beginning, so thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work on this. Yes, sir.
Just wanted to make sure, when you guys complete your application, please denote how much stuff you will need, so that our staff will know exactly what we need to provide. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Stevens, at this time, item number 14.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 14 is a presentation by Mr. Bichard, our Director of Public Utilities, on the city's application for American Public Power Association's designation as a reliable public power provider. So, I'll turn it over to Charlie at this time.
I'm very excited tonight to present to you the RP3 program, the Reliable Public Power Provider Program. I'd like to introduce you to this. I made application with the American Public Power Association last summer to apply for designation as a reliable public power provider, and we have received that designation unofficially. We officially won't receive the designation until April 1st, so it's coming. I'm very proud of it. I'm very proud of it for the organization. It's not a gimme application. It's not a rubber stamp. You have to prove yourself to this panel. And what it is, it's an evaluation of our utility by other utilities within the municipal market across the nation. It has two main goals. One is it's a tool that we can use as a self-check and do benchmarking on a national level of what we're doing internally with the organization. It also gives us the ability to have some national recognition for this designation and the ability to talk to our customers, our community leaders, governing boards, our state, and our federal regulators about what we're doing in public power. So, how does it work? It's based on four different categories that we feel are the core of a reliable public power provider: reliability, safety, workforce development, and system improvement. And there's questions for each one of those different sections. Each section is weighted equally, 25% apiece. The reliability section focuses their questions on reliability indices, which you will hear we talk about more later in the year, and ranking our utility based on the number of outages we have and the length of those outages. It also asks us questions, are we participating in mutual aid agreements and getting support both regionally and nationally, and obviously, we are, is that very well supported us during the last two hurricanes that we experienced? Are we working on disaster plans? And not only are we working on them, but are we practicing them? Are they current? And I can say, yes, we are. Physical cybersecurity is a new focus in the industry. Not only are we making sure that our gates and our buildings and our facilities are physically locked, but also the threat against cybersecurity attacks all the way from our infrastructure and the control of our infrastructure, all the way to our billing and customer information Safety is also 25% of the application, and it focuses on things as, believe it or not, do you have a safety manual? Are you using it? Is it adopted by the organization? Does it have the authority coming from the board that says, yes, you will use the safety manual? Are we following safe work practices? Are we having regular safety meetings? Are we providing AEDs for our employees and personal protective equipment? And not only are we doing those things, but are we taking our statistics and benchmarking them across the nation about what are our leading trends? Is it slips, trips, and falls? Is it back injuries? Is it ladders? And are we doing something about that? Workforce development is probably the hardest section in the application. It's also worth 25% of the score, and it focuses on questions that make you think about and prove that you're doing succession planning for your organization so that you have long-term health of your organization as far as institutional knowledge goes. And when it's time for that knowledge to walk out the door, you have a plan in place to account for that. Are you doing the proper things with recruiting? Are you involved with local colleges and universities? Do we have developmental plans for our employees so that they feel like they have a place in the workforce and they can grow and they can mature and make it a career here? Are we offering educational opportunities so that our employees can expand on their knowledge and learn from others in the industry? And are we giving our employees opportunities to participate in committees and do networking opportunities where they can go out and they can share information and collaborate with other people in their industry, bring that knowledge back to our organization and make it a better place? The next section is also worth 25%. It's on system improvement, and they want to know if we're doing research and development. You know, obviously, we're not designing the next new flux capacitor here. We're not a research and development community. But are we paying attention to what are the trending technologies that are coming at us? What's emerging technology? Are we using that research to help us make decisions on our day-to-day operations? Are we doing system maintenance? And are we trending what the health of our equipment is? Are we paying attention to our system losses? Do we know what they are? And are we trying to improve our system losses? Are we doing long-term system planning and looking out at the future so that our system can support future growth? And also, are we financially healthy? We think it's really important that in order to be a reliable public power provider, you have to be financially healthy. So, there's a number of questions in the application related to that. The application goes to a review panel. That panel's made up of two large utility members, two medium utility members, two small utility members, and then a variety of other members from different skill sets being reliability, safety, system improvement, human resources, safety officers, and transmission and distribution experts. Overall, there's about 500 years of experience that looks at our application and says, are we a reliable public power provider or not? The application process takes about a year. It opens up in May, and you can start filing your application as early as May. Applications are due in September. Once it receives, the panel gets together in October, grades those applications. Any questions or concerns that they have over an answer, they send back and request for information from the applicant. The applicant has an opportunity to resubmit an answer on that application, and then the panel gets back together again in December and regrades the application in total and responds to all those questions they had on the first go-around. At that time, they make the final score, and in January, they announce what your scores are and tell you whether you've not been designated. Then you have to wait until about late spring. This year, it's going to be April 1st, when the designation is actually awarded to the community. And at that time, I'll be making a...I'll send out some marketing information and do some press releases at the appropriate time. Again, this is not a gimme. Here's a trend of how this application has grown in interest since its conception in 2005. In 2017 was the peak year. There were 120 applicants who applied for designation. Across the United States, North Carolina leads in a number of municipals with the RP3 designation. Up until May of this year, we were not one of the 24. We had a designation back in 2014, but the designation requires resubmittal of an application, and we did not resubmit, so I refiled this year and got it back for us. So, we'll now be part of the 25 in North Carolina that are proud to be a reliable public power provider. Designations, here's some sample data. 2016 to 2018, there were 253 total applicants. 64 were awarded gold, and 98 designated platinum, and 92 designated diamond. We have been designated diamond coming May. The diamond status is 98% to 100% on the application. Platinum is 90 to 98, and gold is 80 to 90. Applied versus designated, some more stats that show you that every year, it's not a gimme, not everybody that applies gets it. 2017 looked like a very favorable year. They had 120 apply. 118 did receive a designation of one of the three different levels. So, why is this all important to our utility? It's a way for your utilities to achieve national recognition for following best practices. It's a self-check that we do here at the utility for ourselves, and it's a clear path for long-term operational sustainability, and it's a significant benefit to all of us that are members of the American Public Power Association. So, it's just not all fluff. The panel has been diving into, how is this really benefiting us? And next few slides are a few bits of data and correlations that really show that, in this particular case, the more questions that an applicant answered correctly, the better their system losses were. Is it true? Data says that there's some correlation to those that are going through this application process are doing a little bit better, paying attention to what's going on with their system and managing those losses. More correlations as related to the application. This one just shows more often applicants have a lower incidence of safety the more times that they go through the application process. So, there's a series of blue, orange, and gray dots. Those dots represent each time an applicant went through the process. Every time they went through the process, their safety indices improved at their organization. And more on safety, another way to show similar data, the more times the applicant was able to answer yes to a question, the lower their incidence for safety in their organization. So, that's about it. I know I went through it pretty quick, but I wanted to give you that introduction. I think it's something that we should be very proud of. We'll make the official announcement in the 1st of April, and hopefully, brand our utility as a reliable public power provider.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I know, I don't remember. It seemed like in the last year, public power did a, I don't, we'd call it an audit, but a peer review of sorts or something. They came to New Bern and looked over, and I remember there was a couple of areas we maybe need to improve. Do you remember that, Mr. Stevens? I was wondering if that in any way tied into where we are now, that we, I know we were working on a couple of improvements, and did that have anything to do with our scoring this time?
Not on this application. I wonder if you're referring to a customer satisfaction survey that was started maybe in... in 2017. I got my hands on that this fall, and I'm going through that with the UBO, and we're going to be working on the results of that and what we should be doing based on the information from that survey. Board, any questions?
Charlie, I'd just like to say, thank you very much. You and your department should be very proud for this designation of reliable power. You guys do a great job, and I commend any of our employees that when the wind's blowing and it's windy and lightning and thundering and snowing and everything else and everybody else's home, they're out working, keeping us safe, and our power back on, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Yes, sir.
Charlie, I was hoping you were going to show a slide that said, once we get certified, we get lower costs, but...
You know, I have, not cost, but I don't have a slide on it, but I do have several magazine articles that the trend is with bond rating agencies and with insurance agencies, they are paying attention to the RP3 status across the nation. I'm glad you redirected me back to that, and we are seeing more favorable ratings with our bonding agencies and our insurance agencies with those that are designated RP3.
Well, along those same lines, Mayor, if I will, we had a work session at 3 o'clock today, and there wasn't nearly as many people in the audience when we did that. But I know that there's been a lot of questions about the retail power rate from the city of New Bern. Just so everyone is aware, and I'm sure there's probably more people tuning in now than there was today, the board voted unanimously today to keep our retail rates the same for the next two years. Correct? Two years? Okay. Just want to make sure everyone was aware of that.
It's a no-brainer.
Any other comments, anything?
Yes, sir.
Tom and Harris, you good?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Charlie.
Scott, item number 15.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Item number 15 is a presentation on Ban the Box. This time, I would like to ask Whitley Carpenter, the staff attorney for the Southern Coalition for Social Justice. She's also joined by other folks that are here with us with regards to Ban the Box. And at this point, I will turn it over to Whitley.
Good evening, y'all. I'm Whitley Carpenter. I'm a staff attorney with Southern Coalition for Social Justice in Durham, North Carolina.
And I'm in Gaza laughing out some also with staff attorney for Southern Coalition for Social Justice.
My name is Corey Purdy. I'm just a resident of New Bern and Greenville.
More than that.
Before I get started with the presentation, I just want to let you guys know, three of us introduced ourselves as the people presenting, but we're representing a much larger group. I want to recognize Salahuddin Abdullah. He has organized community meetings out here in New Bern to get the voices of directly impacted people. Laura Holland, she's an attorney with the North Carolina Justice Center and has been a part of our legal team, helping draft our proposed policy. Kristen Powers, our advocacy coordinator, she's been instrumental in helping us with strategy, communications, and knowledge of best business practices. And most importantly, all the New Bern community members who showed up tonight, spoke in public comment about their personal experiences, and attended all these regular community meetings to share their voice as directly impacted people. Thank you all. All right, so we're going to start by telling you what Ban the Box is. We talked about it a lot, so this will be short and sweet. It's a movement to remove the questions related to arrest or criminal convictions from the initial job application, and instead, these questions are delayed until after an interview is conducted and a conditional offer is made. Corey's going to tell you a little bit about the history of Ban the Box.
Ban the Box was started in 2004 by Organizations for All of the None. That's an organization located out of California. We recently established a chapter here in eastern North Carolina, eastern North Carolina, chapter All of the None. As stated by Attorney Daniel Bowles from North Carolina Justice Center, as of 2018, 200 cities and counties in 33 states have adopted a Ban the Box ordinance.
All right, so here's an employment timeline, just to get a better understanding of how Ban the Box works. So you start out with that initial job application with no mention of criminal history whatsoever. And then there's a screening for qualified applicants, just as any job application process would go. Conditional offers are given out, and that's when the criminal background check comes into play. The applicant reviews and offers evidence of rehabilitation. That could be a certificate of relief. It could be education since their conviction, or just anything they've done to show that they're trying to contribute to society in a positive way. And then at that point, the offer can be confirmed or revoked.
And these are some of the best practices in crafting a Ban the Box policy. Number one, it's important to let applicants view their records after the city has had a chance to look at the records, just to ensure accuracy in the records. It's also good to limit the amount of people that come into contact with the records to keep certain things confidential. It's also good to train folks on how to look at the records and review them to avoid any mistakes that come from misunderstandings of how to review records and what everything means on the record. It's also important to let applicants come back after they've been denied or any action has been taken due to their record and present evidence of rehabilitation, whether that be letters of commendation, certificates, or anything of that nature.
I know this looks like a lot of words, but I promise I'm not going to read it. I'm going to give you some key notes from the policy that we've proposed for New Bern. First, the background check should be limited to seven years, convictions that happened within the last seven years. That background check can't be used as a basis to deny unless it's a job-related, unless it's related to the job or there's a business necessity. And when you're considering business necessity, you're looking at the nature of the offense and the relationship to the position that the person is applying for. You're looking at the time passed since that conviction. You're looking at the number of convictions, the age at the time of offense. Would hiring pose a risk to the business? And other evidence about character and fitness, like references? Arrest and dismissal should not be a part of the hiring process and can't be a basis for denying employment. We've also included detailed procedures with various forms attached to use when communicating with an applicant. One of those forms states that the person would have seven days to dispute any inaccuracy or business necessity or provide evidence of rehabilitation. Evidence of rehabilitation is a certificate of relief, and we've been helping a lot of New Bern residents to gain those since the clinic we had here in July. We're happy to answer questions about those as well. And finally, we ask that data is collected regularly and summarized each year following the policy, making it publicly available and shared annually via press release. And this is helpful in helping other counties and cities put these same policies out there.
So nationwide, we have about 77 million Americans who have a criminal record, and that's one in three adults in America, just like one in three of us standing up here right now have a criminal record. There have been numerous studies that have found that when you have that criminal record, your likelihood of being called back for a job drops to about 50% as well.
And here, I have a chart about the population under control of the US corrections system in 1980 and 2016, and you can see how there's been a drastic increase of the number of people in prison, jail, probation, and parole. In 1980, there were 1,842,100 individuals, but in 2016, there were 6,613,500 individuals, which means we've more than tripled the number of people under US corrections population. Got one more graph here, talking about criminal records nationwide, and this is just focusing on the prison population, which, as you can also see, since 1980, has definitely increased. It looks like in 2016, there were 1,458,173 people in state and federal prison.
And this chart just illustrates the effect that mass incarceration, not mass incarceration, but the war on drugs has had on the populations in jail, in federal prisons, and in state prisons as well. You see those numbers back in 1980 were relatively low compared to 2016, 15, when those numbers shot up. And in North Carolina in particular, we've seen that about 2 million people in North Carolina have criminal records, about 1 in 4 adults. And we also see that black folks in North Carolina make up about 21% of our population, yet we're 45% of the people that are under the supervision from the North Carolina Department of Corrections.
Having a record not only impacts the person with that record, but it impacts the family as well. Nearly half of all United States children have a parent with a criminal record, and children with an incarcerated parent are significantly more likely to be expelled or suspended from school. There's also studies showing that total family income drops 15% when a father is incarcerated. So jobs, as we're talking about Ban the Box, are just one of many obstacles that people with records face. When we talk about collateral consequences, we're thinking about all of these things that keep denying people of their humanity, of their basic needs, to put food on the table for their families, and it's like they're continuing to hold the weight of that criminal record on their shoulder. And we want to push back against that scarlet letter that people are wearing on their forehead where their record is continuing to come back and keeping people from accomplishing their goals.
So at the bottom of that slide, we see a lot of other areas where people with the records face barriers in their life. We see employment, housing, education, and public benefits, school volunteering, certain professional licenses, civic engagement, and recreational licenses. We see that even when people come out of the system, when they finish with their prison sentence, when they finish with their probation, they're still held behind by each one of these barriers and the collateral consequences. And the question becomes, well, for how long do they have to be held on like that? And so this graph right here just represents the effects that a record has on your call back for interviews. Just going across the top, we see that when white applicants do not have criminal records, they're called back about 34% of the time for an interview. But when they do have criminal records, that number drops down to about 17% of the time. Up under that, you see black applicants. When we apply for jobs, we get called back about 14% of the time without any criminal record. But when we do have that criminal record, it drops down to about 4%. And one of the things that's important to note up there as well is that even when black applicants don't have a criminal record, we're still less likely to get called back than white applicants who do have a criminal record. So while this issue, this Ban the Box will help everybody, because we're all doing bad in this job market when we have a criminal record, it'll particularly help people of color. Black folks face a very particular pain with this situation right here.
So in North Carolina, Southern Coalition for Social Justice led the first successful Ban the Box campaign in Durham, and that led to the passage of administrative policies in both the city and county governments in 2011 and 2012. And since then, these counties have implemented Ban the Box policies.
And this is just a few of the cities in North Carolina, but we have Asheville, Charlotte, Durham, Wilmington, Winston-Salem, and the counties include Buncombe, Cumberland, Forsyth, Mecklenburg, New Hanover, and Wake County. We also have even Duke University Ban the Box, the largest employer in Durham, employing about 34,000 people, leaving their Ban the Box as well.
And here, I'm just sharing a little bit of information about Durham City and Ban the Box. So this chart shows the number of people with criminal records hired by Durham City since Ban the Box was implemented. It includes convictions, dismissals, and pending charges, and acquittals, but it's important to note that 46 of the 75 hires in 2017 were people with convictions, and that retention rate is extremely high. So if you're hiring people with records, they're staying on the job. It's also important to note that in the first three years of the policy in Durham, people with criminal records hired by the city of Durham increased nearly sevenfold. So that's seven times as many people with records being hired because of this policy. And here, we're going to kind of wrap it up with the benefits of Ban the Box. And outside of helping people with records, it also helps the economy. So the reduced output of goods and services with people with felonies and prison records is estimated at $78 to $87 billion in losses to the nation's economy in one year. Allowing people to work increases their tax contributions, boosts sales tax, and saves money by keeping people out of the criminal justice system. Ban the Box improves public safety. When we talk about recidivism and people reoffending, studies show that gainful employment is the most successful intervention in decreasing recidivism. One study showed that two years after release, employed people were more than twice as likely to not have committed any additional crimes when compared to formerly incarcerated people who were unable to secure a job. Another study conducted over three years found that formerly incarcerated people who were consistently employed throughout the year had a 16% recidivism rate compared to a 52.3% recidivism rate for all other Department of Corrections releases.
So we've also seen that Ban the Box helped families, because of course, it only helps when the mother and father are both gainfully employed. We've seen that employers are helped. They find people, valued workers, and there's been multiple studies that have found that people with records, with criminal records, are more productive when they get on the job as well. It's also been proven to be effective. All over the country, we see different cities and jurisdictions and states adopting this Ban the Box policy. And if it was not effective, it was sizzled off and disappeared years ago, but instead, the opposite is happening. When it was implemented up in DC, they had a 33% increase in the hiring of people with records. In Minneapolis, 50% of the people that applied for records, applied for jobs with a record ended up being hired. In Durham, in Atlanta, everywhere, we see these numbers going up. In fact, even at the point we're at right now, 3/4 of America lives in a jurisdiction that is Ban the Box. So the question just becomes, well, what's New Bern waiting for?
I promise y'all, this is the last slide, and I'm going to let Corey explain to y'all why New Bern should ban the box, but we've gotten this question a lot as we're coming down here, having these community meetings. Like, you're from Durham, why are you here? We had a clinic here in July of 2018, Umar Mohammed Clean Slate Clinic, and we had over 400 people show up trying to get their records cleared. In our experience, I've been doing this since 2014, I've found that less than half of the people that come to those clinics and try to get their records cleared are actually eligible for any meaningful legal relief. And so we can't just throw the rest of those people away. So we continue to work with the community out here to figure out other means to help these people have a means of taking care of their families so that their record is not what's holding them back, and we know that they aren't the sum of their worst mistakes.
And I guess just, we talked about everything that's going on globally, but just to bring it home, everybody here was affected by Hurricane Katrina, I mean Hurricane Florence. Since Hurricane Florence, we had over 1,500 people. 13 of those 100 people, 1,300 of those people were formerly incarcerated people. And they were okay to go snatch snakes from other people's houses. They were okay to go and mow their houses and then tear down the walls. But they're now okay to just fill out applications and get a fair interview. Through our organization alone, we provided over 120 jobs to formerly incarcerated people. And thankful to, as we know, a lot of those contractors left, but thankful for local contractors as the Bengals that held on for one of those individuals without asking about a criminal background. And in 2016, we honored Ms. Autumn and Bingo with a certificate for fair hiring, because she hired individuals through our program associated with Crave Community College, and the presentation that Grace gave earlier. And to New Bern, I came up and I said, I'm a resident in New Bern, and everybody smiled. If I go to Raleigh, I go to VA to fill out an application. This is what it is for Corey. I have to check that box. So no matter how good I am in New Bern, no matter where I go in the country, I still have to explain that situation. But I never, I never, I never make the opportunity to explain it, but I got to check that box.
Thank you. I just want to say that...
So we have petitions from residents of New Bern about banning the box, also from local businesses that we'd like to share with you guys. Sorry.
You can go ahead, Ms. Brenda. I just want to say that you guys did an amazing job on your presentation. I actually have the pleasure of working hand-to-hand with Corey over probably five or six years. So this is really important to me, because I'm a big supporter of the second chance. Everyone knows I love our current sitting governor, and he is also a big supporter of the second chance, and I feel like if we tonight decide to move forward and support the Ban the Box, that we progress as a city, we help with the recidivism rate, and we set ourselves, along with other municipalities that support Ban the Box, because it's very important that the individuals... that come out of prison and they change their life, that we don't see them as second class, that they are just like anyone else. They made a mistake, and they deserve to be able to have the opportunity to show you who they are and not what they were. So I'm just asking that my colleagues have a discussion. I know during the break, me and Alderman-Bingle have talked to the city attorney, so there's some things that we need to do. I know the next item of business is adopting, but we're not at that point. So what I would say is, we would like to, I know you probably have a comment, we would like to have the board agree that they support to ban the box and come back on March 26th, because that's longer than a month, to allow the city attorney to get with his colleagues in regards to a human resource policy that we can then pass unanimously in regards to how we will process and move forward in regards to banning the box. And I don't know if that's a motion, but that's direction. But I want, I would like a show of hands, because individuals came out today, and they would like to know where everybody stands in regards to this. So whether we say aye or we show hands that we do support banning the box, I think that would really appease us tonight.
The only comment I want to make, Cory, thank you for your comments. As an employer, there's nothing more satisfying than working with an individual who just wants a job and comes in every day and works really hard, and then you see them go to community college, and you see them working in the automotive program and getting their certificate and getting a great paying job, and there's nothing better than seeing that. And so thank you for the opportunity to serve this community by bringing these individuals to us and letting us work with the program. But we're really proud and pleased to be able to help individuals. You know, we can't change the world overnight, but one by one, we can help them. And anybody like to talk to Jeremiah Simmons? He's just a wonderful, outstanding young man, and he's been in our employ now, and he's actually not going to be working much longer because he's getting his certificate from the community college in automotive mechanics, and he's going to get a really good job. So that's just an example of what hiring people who just want to work can do for you, and they just need a chance. And it's right, it's about that second chance. And Alderman-Harris, I fully support banning the box. I would like for our attorney to come back with the language, so we're not hurting anybody's rights or doing anything else, but I fully support banning the box, and I want to say that.
Go ahead, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say, several months ago, my son decided that he wanted to move. And when it was, when he wants to move, I'm the one that typically has to move him. And I'm getting to the age where I just didn't want to do that anymore, so I picked up the telephone and I called Cory. And Cory provided me... Cory, where are you? Okay, Cory provided me with some young men that I have never in my life seen anyone work as hard as these young men moving my son from one house to the other, and I'm talking about up and down stairs. So when I first sat here tonight and started thinking about this, I was kind of concerned about it. In fact, I wanted to make sure that we were doing the right thing. But as I listened to your presentation, I will vote for the city of New Bern to ban If it gives an applicant an opportunity to sit back in front of a department head or a human resource director to explain his certifications and to explain his downfalls in life maybe, or problems that he had as an earlier, you know, as a teenager or something, it's well worth it. So, great presentation, Cory. Man, you're doing a great job with the kids and the community, I appreciate it. And in fact, I called Cory up and told Cory, I said, that one young man, he works so hard, if he's applying for a job somewhere and needs a reference, to use me for a reference. I mean, I was, I was just, he was just one heck of a worker. Kept me from having to do it, and it was well worth, it was well worth the hourly rate that I paid him. Thank you, Cory, and I will support this.
I too am a firm believer in giving an individual a second chance, because I know, I know a lot of the people out here in the audience that needs a second chance. And I look at it from a perspective of, I have two children that they're grown, that could have made some mistakes when they were young adults, that they would be carrying a criminal record with them for the rest of their lives, and it would be a hardship on them when they're trying to find a job. So I too will vote yes on ban the box, because I know a lot of people now are seeking employment, they're homeless, they need a job, and if we as a board can allow this ban the box and approve this, hopefully the city of New Bern will be able to give some of those skilled individuals a job. So thank you for your presentation. And Mr. Purdy, I know your mother, I knew your mother well, I know she would be very proud of you.
Mayor, I have the privilege, if you want to call it that, of hiring people. And when you're in an economy that's doing pretty well, like we are right now, finding applicants is a job in itself. I can't tell you from Winston-Salem to Tidewater, Virginia, to Wilmington, North Carolina, finding people to apply is a challenge. I've done job fairs, I've done online advertising, we've done, you know, traditional paper advertising. So if there is anything that we can do to make sure that we don't weed out any qualified applicant, I would absolutely support that. And I do have a question, because I don't know this, and I'm going to put the manager on the spot, and he's giving me that look like these department heads do sometimes. Does our application ask for race?
We have, I'm pretty sure that it does.
But is it optional?
It is, it is optional, but I think it is only received by our human resources department specifically for the purpose to determine how many or what the percentages are of minority applicants in our process. Department heads do not receive that. Anybody that, or anybody that reviews the applications that are submitted.
And the reason I ask is, once again, regardless of race, creed, religion, color, I want the best employee that I can put in front of my customers, and I think that's the same thing the city of New Bern wants, and that's what we're saying tonight. So thank you all for what you did today.
Well, again, I want to thank everybody for what they're doing and have done, and I can't begin to thank individually everybody that's been involved in this, but I'm going to tell you on a personal level what Greg Singleton has done, and the way he's done it, and the voice he's, he's been a Moses in New Bern to this situation, and the relationship that the community college has with reentry. And, you know, politics in New Bern is not a singular event, it's not a, it's not a seven-member panel, it's totally a team effort. And tonight, my support of this is totally based on a team effort and what I've seen Greg do in New Bern. And again, I'm not trying to leave anybody out, but there's a movement here, and this is going to make New Bern better, it's the right time.
The presentation was very, very good, I was very impressed with it. I've also been in those same shoes that everybody's walking in. I was very fortunate that I had someone behind me to support me and push me through. I had a chance to win the Mr. America, I've been in movies, I trained three heavyweight champions of the world, I own my own business, I've become elected official, I made a decision a long time ago in my life, what I wanted to do, and I've been pardoned by the governor. So like I said, I had a lot of good people in my life to support me and push me and believe in me. And I like to tell you guys and ladies, you can do the same thing. You've just got to know what you want, know when you want to go get it, and do it. Don't let no one tell you that you can't do it. Don't let a box be an option to you. I had a chance to train with some of the best athletes in the world, got a chance to travel the world, and I was just blessed, you know, just had people in my life. And but first, I had to make the decision myself, what do I want? It's not what the box says to you. You don't use a box. You got to know what you want. If you're hungry, you will eat, okay? Always remember, what do you want? I support the box, because I've been where you all are, okay? I didn't have to stay there long, it was just a short period of time for me, because I had someone in my corner, and I was just blessed again. And I take my hand off to everyone, I wish you the best, but always remember, stand up for what you believe in if you have to stand alone. Go forward and work hard, be the best that you can be.
Well, I don't think you need a motion, but I just want to reiterate...
No, ma'am, I heard you loud and clear.
March 26th.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we just get a show of hands for the audience of everybody that supports banning Guess that takes care of item 16.
Thank you all for coming out, and God bless you, Cory. God bless you.
Don't everybody leave, we're naming streets, and we've got a lot of other stuff to do.
Let's go, item 17.
Thank you, Mayor members of the board. Item number 17 is an opportunity for the board to receive public comment and consider adopting a resolution, naming a currently unnamed street as Cheryl Drive. This is a street in the area of Glen Burnie Road, it's an unnamed street that connects Elizabeth Avenue with Amherst Boulevard. In 2013 and 15, a proposed development named Quail Forest was reviewed and the right-of-way for this roadway dedicated but not officially named. The proposed name before you tonight is Cheryl Drive, it was reviewed and approved by the E-911. Staff has met with the adjacent property owners regarding the name proposal, it has requested that the board receive any kind of public comments, and consider also adopting a resolution to establish the name if they so choose to do so. So at this point, I'll turn it over to the board for the public comment.
Where did the board name come from? I'm just curious.
Ms. Wilson, our GIS coordinator is here, GIS manager, and she is going to give you that.
So as the manager said, there was a development that was proposed in this area, just adjacent to this road, and that's where the name came from. The owner of the property, Mr. Hatt Parrott, submitted that name, it was reviewed by the 911 coordinator, and it was adopted, but it just never has been officially, because the project never went forward.
Okay, so Hatt, this one, okay. I'm just curious. Any questions on the board? Yes.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution, naming a currently unnamed street as Cheryl Drive.
Second. Motion and second is their discussion, seen on the Saturday roll call, starting with Alderman-Odom.
Alderman-Odom?
Yes.
Alderman-Dess?
Yes.
Alderman-Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Atwell?
Yes.
Alderman-Aster? Alderman-Harris? Alderman-Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number 18.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 18 is to consider adopting a resolution approving a license use agreement with Federal Energy, or, I'm sorry, Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA. They have requested the use of office space that we have at our old water resources facility located at 2825 News Boulevard. The proposed agreement provides for their use of the building through June 30th of 2019 at no cost. We have actually been allowing them the use of this space since they closed the Rite Aid facility to continue to help facilitate individual assistance where needed, and also to operate from there with any other kind of needs that they have. But as their organization is required, they need to have this lease in place in order to meet all the requirements. So this is really kind of a rubber stamp thing for us, unless y'all deem that they shouldn't be.
Okay, board have questions? Yes, ma'am.
The only question I have is, what liability will the city have for as FEMA employees?
I'm pretty sure that there are, that they would cover their own liability.
We can identify from that.
Right.
Is that right, Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
If there's any more questions. I'd like to make a motion that the board approve a lease agreement with the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA for the property located at 2825 News Boulevard and owned by the city of New Bern.
Second. Motion and second is their discussion, seen on the Saturday roll call, starting with Alderman-Bingle.
Alderman-Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman-Harris? Alderman-Aster?
Yes.
Mayor Atwell?
Yes.
Alderman-Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman-Dess?
Yes.
Alderman-Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. Stevens, item number 19.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 19 is consideration by the board to adopt a resolution to accept a deed in lieu of foreclosure of tax lien. This is for a property that was foreclosed on by the county at 209 Lawson Street for delinquent ad valorem taxes that are owed to the county. At the time of that foreclosure, there was also delinquent taxes that were due of the city that was omitted from the foreclosure action, and the commissioner's deed was recorded on August the 18th of 2018 conveying the property to the county, which resulted in the city's tax liens remaining intact. So in lieu of us foreclosing as the city to collect that against the county, they are looking to, at this time, the board to adopt a resolution to accept a deed in lieu of foreclosure for the tax lien. Myself and the attorney will answer any questions you may make.
Well, I'm not, I'm not as familiar with it from that angle. Most time I see a deed in lieu of foreclosure, it has to do with a major asking the lender to convey in lieu of foreclosure. So I'm not familiar with it in this application, is that the way to do that?
This is the exact same concept, and the county, just rather than making us foreclose to get our percentage ownership interest in the property, has agreed to streamline the process and avoid the city's foreclosure and share the property with us, as if we were involved in the first foreclosure like we should have been.
Does this expedite it, what you're doing?
This just, this just puts us back in the position that we should have been in two years ago, without any extra cost. That's the short run.
Are there any disadvantages to doing this, or any advantages to what we're doing?
Huge advantage, saves us between $500,000 and $6,000 a time, and those costs we wouldn't recoup. Yeah, this is a good, this is, this is, the county being a good neighbor and helping each other, it's all a problem.
Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion adopting the resolution to accept a deed in lieu of foreclosure of the tax lien on 209 Lawson Street.
Second. Motion and second is their discussion, seen on the Saturday roll call, starting with Alderman-Odom.
Alderman-Odom?
Yes.
Alderman-Dess?
Yes.
Alderman-Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Atwell?
Yes.
Alderman-Aster?
Yes.
Alderwoman-Harris?
Yes.
Alderman-Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number 20.
Thank you, Mayor members of the board. Tom McKeon of 2800 Millender Lane has requested additional street lighting at the intersection of South Glen Burnie Road and Millender Lane. The Department of Public Utilities has evaluated the area and determined the current lighting does not meet the city's standard. The installation of one street light will cost approximately $574, and the monthly utility charge for the service will be $8.44 added to Public Works' budget for street lighting. So at this time, we're asking the board to consider adopting a resolution authorizing the installation of additional streetlights.
Mayor, I just have a question. Maybe this is a longstanding policy, but if a streetlight request is made and staff deems that it does not meet a standard, is there a way that we can alleviate this coming before the board? If the other board members would agree, I mean, I agree...
You know, we had this discussion, it's interesting that something that the staff should be able with GPS to determine, such as a street light, has that board approval, but if somebody takes an eight-foot ditch and decides to put a two-foot pipe in there when you probably, in my opinion, a four-foot, I never hear anything about it. So there's a lot of those type things I'd like to readdress, whether or not the, particularly Alderman-Kinsey, and I don't mean to get on a soapbox or digress, but with this in mind, he's got a major development picture to improve, and legally, this board makes me have to sign off on something that I'm not sure I'm going to sign off on. So there's quite a few answers and other questions will pop up, but your question... So there, there's quite a few questions, answers and other questions will pop up, but your question, Alderman Odom.
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to bring up Stormwater by saying that. But I, I don't know what the appetite for the board is.
Each time you can bring it up, I'm ready to talk about it.
I, I agree. I think if staff makes, if it meets the recommendations and, you know, within specifications of whatever guideline Charlie and his staff use, I think they should install.
As long as we're not redundantly, you know, putting the streetlights out. I mean, you're, you're following that. I mean, we have a, we have a policy in effect on GPS is how it works anyway, right?
Yeah, there's, there's essentially, there's, there's several different scenarios where I could see there may be some reason to bring it before the board. But, but in this particular case, you're talking about one light at a specific location. If we're taking over a large stretch of street that has no lighting, that maybe was a DOT street at one time, where lighting may be required and we're having to put lighting at the spacing all the way down that street and it's a significant expense to the general fund on the power cost and a significant expense to the electric department as far as the installation cost, I certainly would think that that would be something that we would need to bring before the board because obviously it's additional cost that was not budgeted for. The other item that I would say that would be of concern is in areas where there's a specific security need. If y'all deem it okay for us based on what the police department's recommendations are, oftentimes we meet the lighting standard as it's been deemed by, you know, as, as the, the Public Utilities Office deems it. But sometimes there is public safety concerns to where there may be additional lighting needed. And in those particular cases, we're going outside of what is required. And my concern is, is that would open up a Pandora's box of, well, we need additional lighting, we need additional lighting. But obviously that would need to be at, at, at the call of our chief and-
Would you need an ordinance change on this?
Um, I don't know. I'd have to look and see if this is specifically something that's listed in our ordinance that the board acquires. I'd need to do some research on that.
My thought would be to approve this tonight if it pleases the board and then instruct staff to look into this and report back to the board if that's something we want to do.
I'm fine with that.
What legal procedures are on it?
I make a motion then, consider adopting a resolution authorizing install addition of a street light.
Second.
Motion and second and discussion. Let's see now, this, this is a resolution. Now let's have roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, just go to appointments with Alderman Odom?
None tonight, sir.
Alderman Best?
None.
Alderman Kinsey?
Not right now, sir.
Okay, Alderman Astor.
Uh, yes.
I thought I was going to Alderman Boyd out there, man, I'm sorry.
But he, he comes after me. Yes, I would like to make an appointment tonight to the planning and zoning board for, to reappoint Mr. Sunny. Is it Aluso? Aluso?
Second.
Motion and second and discussion. On favorite motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same.
Okay, and then on the HPC, Mr. Anderson has resigned from the HPC. So I am going to appoint Ellen Sheridan to fill the remainder of Mr. Anderson's term, which will expire in June. Second.
Motion and second and discussion. On favorite motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same.
Okay, and then on the HPC, Mr. Anderson has resigned from the HPC. So I am going to appoint Ellen Sheridan to fill the remainder of Mr. Anderson's term, which will expire in June. Second.
Motion and second and discussion. On favorite motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same. Any other appointments tonight? Attorney's report? Let's go to city manager.
None that I'm aware of, sir. I have, I have nothing else as well.
Sir?
I have nothing tonight as well.
Let's go to new business, starting with Alderman Odom?
Nothing, sir.
Alderman Best?
No attorney's report.
Alderman Best?
No.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes, sir. Mr. Manager, on the minutes that was taken, I think they were very, very long. How many hours did it take to do that?
Uh, probably would defer that to the clerk. Almost a week, is that correct, Brendan?
It took more than a week.
Oh.
I, I, I think that's counted too long for minutes. Isn't it some other way that we could do that without taking it? What, what, what is the recommendation from the schools of government to do minutes? Because you don't have a, an assistant anymore and Brendan, the clerk does work for you and for the board. And I, I just think that's too much time to spend in doing minutes, isn't it? I mean, is that something that the board wants? Or if I'm speaking out of turn here, you know, help me here.
Last question. Which minutes are you talking, referring to?
The minutes that we just approved tonight.
Oh, last meeting. There was three, there was thirty, three. But there was three sets, so that was a lot of minutes in there.
It's a lot of work. Well, I mean, I mean, if that's what you want her to do, if that's what you, if that's what, you know, the board wants her to do, I'm not a part of that there. I mean, what is-
Mr. Kinsey, Alderman Kinsey, you know, she had a, a meeting from the fifteenth. We had the twenty, we had extra meetings, which we don't normally have. And then we had an all-day retreat, which was from eight to five. So that was a lot of notes. That's unusual. And I could see where that can take a lot of time because, I mean, typically she has two sets of minutes a month. That, because we have two minutes we had. Now this month, we'll have three meetings because we had the work session today. But that's, that was the issue. An all-day retreat with eight to five, that's a lot of notes. We sent a lot of stuff during that time.
But she's writing everything in depth, what's being said. But what is recommended from the schools of government for her to do minutes?
Based on our discretion.
I guess by statute, and correct me if I'm wrong, the only requirement by the, the state statute is, is the action taken to account for the decisions of, of the boards.
Is it that we can make a motion that she can do it that way, so that go to doing it the long way?
We work at the pleasure of the board, whatever the board's, board's decision is.
I, I have a question, I guess probably for the attorney. With, by only having to record the item and the action taken, what would that look like for a retreat? Because there was only a few things that we actually took action on. So does that mean statutorily, we only have to record those?
Yeah, the statute requires an accounting of the meeting so that, so people would know what topic was discussed and what, if any, action the board took. You know, and before the internet and video recording, you know, that was quite important. And it, and it wasn't uncommon to have more robust minutes because that was the only record that anyone had of the meeting. But now with recordings and, you know, video archiving, you know, there's, there's an option to, to, to do, to revert back to an accounting of the meeting and then rely on the video and the recorded video to, if you care, to see exactly who said what. But it's, it's up to the board. You, you can't do less than the minimum, but you can certainly do more. But as to what the clerk does, she, she works for you and we'll do whatever you ask her to do, I'm sure.
I have a question. So Madam Clerk, how long does it take you to actually just do a regular meeting? And I know that's with all the comments we have that each one of us board members make. How long does that take you? A day or so?
It takes about two days for a regular meeting.
Just a regular meeting?
Sometimes it can be longer depending on the length of the meeting. Because I have to play back the tape, listen to everything, back it up, go back and forth.
Along, along with being interrupted by people walking in or people checking mail or phone calls or along with that. So just keeping that in mind, it is a very difficult process.
One more question. Okay. So let me, let me, let me follow this. So right now you are recording, you are typing the minutes here of everything that we're said tonight. All right, and you got a copy of it there, which is a hard copy, right? It can be a hard copy.
This is not the final because I go back, listen to the tape and add in the comments.
Okay, okay.
What I do here is basically get down some of the comments, but all of the action.
So that means that, so you won't omit anyone's comments. You got to really record all of the comments because that, what may be important to me, you may not feel it's important to you, but it's important to me. So that means you have to record everything we say.
Pretty much. That way it's not at my discretion as to what you consider.
I was next.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Harris, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah. My question was, well, I know that we had a discussion earlier on in whether we, she was supposed to, we wanted her to kind of like summarize. I don't know what happened to that. I don't, but I was in favor of her summarizing what, whatever was going on, like not verbatim because obviously that can get a little long-winded. But I know when it's, I would say when it's a hot-ticketed item to have comments, but everything else, you know, summarize important points.
Alderman?
I, I guess that probably falls to what Alderman just said. What could be a hot ticket for one of us may not be for another.
That's the problem.
Could I, could I make a, maybe just a suggestion? Could, could she record the minutes as statutorily required, the item and the action taken, but at the beginning of all of our minutes have a boilerplate calls that says, "For more detailed representation of this meeting, please visit", and you could put the website, you could put whatever the reference could be to point the person in the right direction if they really wanted to see that. Because this index now, I believe, our meetings are, so you can actually go right to the particular-
Not everybody has access to be able to do that, though.
Well, could we put a computer downstairs?
We have a digital copy at that city hall that we maintain. We have the, the actual video that we maintain and-
I, I wouldn't want her to get away from actually having things on there because there's individuals that read the comments and it's important that we do put, yeah, and pick on, describe what's going on. Obviously, this is a fluke of how long it was it took a week because of the retreat. But if she's able to do the minutes in two days for a regular meeting, I don't, I don't, I personally don't see what the issue is.
What did the last clerk do?
Alderman Astor, go ahead.
Again, the only, the only concern I have with it is when you put it in writing, you have a, a record forever.
You do.
You know, that's my only concern. If you, if you have it electronically, I don't know how's it stored electronically. Is it, you know, and then fifty years from now, somebody be able to use it, the electronic record to gain access to what they're looking for. I mean, if it's in writing, it's a forever record.
Right.
Um, Mr. Bates, how long did you have to keep, retain records?
How long, well, minutes are forever.
Well, the minutes are forever.
Okay, Alderman Kinsey?
Uh, what did the last clerk, how did she keep the records? I can't remember.
Same thing.
How did she do it?
She took all the minutes.
Okay.
She took all the minutes and recorded them.
Did she do by mail?
Yeah, it's, believe me, we had, we had a lot of conversation back in those days. So there were pages and pages and pages and it, you know, it was really frustrating, but she was taking-
Sometimes it would take her two, three weeks because there's so much work for her to do.
Correct. And then she had the cemeteries on her, she had to do the cemeteries and all this other stuff. I think the, the issue might be here is that, you know, the clerk has had somebody at the front desk that she doesn't have there anymore. Or they have a temporary in there, and I'm not sure. But her, her, you know, maybe we need to hire somebody else to answer all the questions of the people. As the clerk of the City of New Bern, it's her job to record the minutes and to take care of the specific duties. Answering every question of everybody that comes in the door isn't necessarily the job of the clerk of the City of New Bern. And maybe we need somebody else in that position to answer and field those questions. That will free up the clerk's time. And that, again, is the issue.
Due to the hurricanay that she's been inundated with a whole bunch of-
I still say that the minutes shouldn't be done that long. I mean, take her to do that, that, take that long to do the minutes. If we can just go by what the law requires her to do, I think that would be the right thing to do. That's just my opinion.
I want that. I, I prefer to have my comments in the record. I know a couple of times I go through them and say, "This wasn't stated correctly", or fix it, or, or whatever. And I just prefer to have the record stated. So at this time, I, do you want a motion or how do you want to proceed with this? But my, my feeling is that we leave it the way it is.
He, he would end up making a motion if he wanted to change it.
Right.
Yes ma'am.
My thing, my thing here is that we have, this board has really put a tremendous amount of work on Mark and Brenda, our city clerk, city manager. And I don't want this to be a significant workload put on her that she is falling behind because of trying to get these minutes done when there's other important issues and work that needs to be done. But if the general statute says that we only have to do minimum minutes and only do what is, record what the action is and the action is a vote, that I think that maybe she needs some additional help. Do, Mark, I asked you back a while, I think it was in December. I asked you, did you and the city clerk need some additional help? And you told me no, but now it seems like that you do. So, I mean, I don't want to put a tremendous, I, I too have once been a city employee and I know what it's like to have a heavy workload on you and you don't have the employees to do that work for you. That, that work is put on you. So I understand that. And if it's where that she needs some additional help, then I think we as a board should do that. Because this is not going to be the first time that she has to record minutes that consist of three sessions, three different individual meetings. So I, I mean, if that's something that you feel that you need, Mark, is additional help, I think that we should take a look at that and at least talk about it.
Let me ask this question, and this is really out there. And if we were to adopt the Institute of Government's rules for, for notes that are then become minutes after approved by the board, is there a technology out there, Mr. Davis, I know you do quite a few other municipalities, is there technology that is reasonably priced that you could take an audio of, of that and, and, and approve the, the notes that become the minutes that are, that are the actions taken? But to incorporate in, in the concerns of Alderman Astor that, that the audio, the video might get, get gone, which has happened, I think we, we actually have a, what was it? We had a couple of minutes of a meeting that we couldn't find that audio, that video on. Is there technology, a company that would just take the audio and run it through a dragon or something and, and, and with a margin of error of eight percent or something, be able to decipher and, and write that down, that you could incorporate that in, in the archives so that, as you're aware, I've had to go back and, and, and sign off on some minutes that I had no, nothing to do with, but that's part of the mayor's office. Could that's something that you could research that we could maybe incorporate to save the staff valuable time that would also, for people, folks concerned about the electronic, you know, getting lost? That we could find reasonably priced somebody that does that?
Could we go look into that, yes sir.
Have you heard of that?
I, I don't have any clients doing that, but that technology dragon you mentioned might be that sophisticated now to, to do that. So you would have your, your accounting, but then you would have, attached to it, you could have an entire transcript.
And along with what Alderman Odom said, you, you could say for additional-
Right.
Detail of the meeting, we have several sources. We have Channel Three, we have, you can come in here, we've got a kiosk here, you can use the computer. Or we actually have a written set of, that we send the tape off, a duplicate tape and-
Right.
Get that done. That would, you know, that was fifty bucks or something to get done that took all this time. Is that-
We'll look into it.
Is that a re something?
Something, I would like, I, I want a copy of the job description, okay? I want to know what duties the clerk has and, and base, my basic knowledge. And I know it's changed since I left because you molded the job into part-time clerk, part-time assistant. Is that correct?
I took two full-time jobs and combined it into one.
Correct, so I'm saying, you, you made the job a part-time for the clerk and a part-time for the assistant and put them together to make a full-time job.
But it was two full-time jobs.
Okay, so then, then maybe we made a mistake and we should have a full-time clerk and a full-time assistant.
And, and maybe that's the case now if that's what this board wants to do. But I made that decision at that point. I made that decision at that point because the board was okay with us doing the statutorily required minutes. And I, I maybe the three members-
I don't know, I'll go, I've gone back to the minutes prior to myself coming back on the board and they were not just a motion, a whatever, they had some depth to them.
They had a little depth to them, there's no doubt. But there was no, there was nothing to forty-four pages of details like our retreat was this past-
Well, we had a lot of comments. I mean, it, it is what it is. But I want to understand what the role of the city clerk, if it's changed in any way and, and what that position is. And I think we need to understand that. And then what the position of your assistant is and what, what's needed. And let's make sure we have what we need at this point.
Mr. City Attorney?
some people to answer to, everyone thinks their comments are key, so when you're going to air, you're going to air on the side of including everyone, because otherwise you're going to slight someone by not including their key comment, but most minutes I see are a page or two, and if someone leaves a discussion, it would say, "Alderman Blank led a discussion regarding this, there was a robust discussion, and there was a motion and a vote, and here's how it went," and, and in the middle of that, there might have been, there might have been sixteen comments back and forth, but those aren't.
They had that, but if somebody said, "For the record," you know, "I'd like for this to be in the record," I think it should be in the record.
Right, and, and that might be a, that might be a tool to, to trigger the clerk, that when you, when you say those magic words, your quote goes in the minutes, and if you don't say the magic words, then we just do a, a gentle summary.
That, that would be.
And I believe I brought that up too, because I know for the first eight, nine, two-hundred meetings, Sabrina had a correction, but I also made the suggestion that if there was a summary, that if you don't look at the men, meetings, not that you say that you didn't, ahead of time, we're not going to sit here and have to pull them out and redo it.
Right.
When you get it Thursday or Friday, skim through it, if, okay, skim through it, if you have any questions, talk to Brenda, she has no problem with fixing it and adding your little comment, and keep it moving so that, but I feel it's okay to summarize, and like he just said, if you want something for the record, say for the record, but summary is good, unless it's a hot topic, where, you know, it's a six to one, or a four to three type of thing, if she, you know.
Well, here's the good news, we have a video and we have a, a voice recording, you can direct the clerk to try a summary for a meeting or two, and, and if you want it more robust, we've got the tools to go back and make it more robust, um, but we can at least feel our way forward, um, to try to condense them a little bit.
And I think, and I think for the record would be awesome.
Is it, is it, where is it?
Clerk, clerk keeps one on her desk, and then we have this, the, the AV system, so we have two, two different places.
And another checks and balance of that, it was a possibility, in addition to the dragon idea, had to, to just go ahead, when the meeting's over, have Colleen put it on disc and send it, and send it to a retention archive.
Yes, yes.
Software company, whatever, um, that, there's, there's folks that.
We ought to have a backup, yeah, a cloud and a backup.
Yeah, but that would be, that would be easily retrievable.
Yes, sir.
If needed.
Yes, sir.
Could you, in other words, we don't, I don't think as a board we like to do new business, um, motions and stuff, we don't have to, so, do we have enough of, of pulse of the board that you could maybe, based on Alderman Kinsey's, um, concerns, that you could report maybe back to the board in our next meeting?
Sure.
Your thoughts?
Yes, sir.
Or when the full board is here, let's don't do it when anybody's missing, let's be respectful of everybody.
I'm going to be calling from the thing, so you can do it on the twelfth if you want to.
Okay.
If you can, yeah.
As long as you're comfortable with it, I just don't want anybody left out, just because I know there's a, a lot of different thoughts of this, and we want, want to be respectful of everybody on the board.
And, and just for the clerk's benefit, would you like her, for tonight's meeting, to, to, to try a somewhat condensed version, to see how it looks, again, you can always tell her, "Not enough, go back."
Exactly, and usually I did, if there's something in there that's missing, I will make the comment and say, "Could you add this," or, "I didn't say that," or, "I'd like this added to the record."
Sure, sure, and, and, and as Alderman Harris mentioned, doing that by email before Tuesday really helps either clerk incorporate your thoughts.
Well, can you clarify something for me, um, several years ago, when we changed clerks or whatever, I was told that you can't put any, the minutes are put out there for the public, the draft minutes are put out for the public.
Right.
So, any changes had to be made at the meeting, because there wasn't time for the public to review, that, so if you put out a set of minutes that say, "A," and there's a change, that's not in time, maybe you see it Monday before the meeting, what's, how do you handle that?
Yeah, I, um, the clerk can share, share the note with the rest of the board, so the board can see the clarification from the original draft, so that.
But would you take care of that during the meeting, or would you?
Well, what, what's most efficient is, is to have the final draft ready to approve.
Okay.
It, it, doesn't the, the, the final draft go out on Friday in post, is that?
It does, but if there's a.
Right, so, Ms. Brenda, when, if, if you had this meeting tonight, and when do you usually get, say, this, these meeting minutes done, say Wednesday? Not to put any pressure on you, I'm just, I'm just saying, because, no, no, I'm just saying, not Wednesday, I'm saying by Wednesday.
I would just say.
Hold on, by Wednesday of that following week before the next meeting, because I would just say, if you can send a draft, you wouldn't have to, you know, you wouldn't have to deal with coming into the meeting if there needs to be a correction, pulling it, putting it back on, if you already have those prepared before we get the rest of agenda, send it out, as, you know, this is a draft, and if anyone has an issue, they can change it there before you give us the final or post it to the public to December.
Can she include it in the pre-agenda?
If she has time.
Even if she's a meeting behind, I mean, we were, we were multiple, we were months behind when we got.
Right, exactly, exactly, yeah.
I didn't hear what you said, Ms.
I said she could put it in the pre-agenda, and then that way we have a day or two to get, keep, keep, uh, comments and feedback back to her, so when she actually.
That's exactly what I'm trying to say.
That'd be what we want to.
That'd be great.
Right, and that makes it simple.
I like that idea.
So, for the record, can you make sure you include verbatim all of this discussion we just had the last time?
Well, let me ask, let me ask the board this, if you have a concern with the notes, I don't think their minutes still are approved, that's okay to get with Brenda and say, "I will make sure that what I said is this," but limit it to that, and not necessarily that, I'm not concerned with what I said, but I want to know what Alderman Best said, I want to know what Alderman Harris said, if we could limit it to our own.
Right.
Our own, um, statements and, and, and not necessarily say, well, particularly Alderman Astor, I remember him saying something about this, that would, that would really streamline, let, let Alderman Astor worry about if he's got a concern about his notes, and then that would, that would be a very good hybrid of.
Yes, sir.
Situation, and again, I mean, as I said, my policy's been all along, is, is, I know we haven't had a policy, because we've gone from, um, verbatim record-keeping to where we are now, and, and it's been, in my, my opinion, until a policy's set, that any Alderman on the board that has a concern, then I think those minutes need to be reflected until the board adopts a policy, which we don't necessarily have a policy right now, but we're hopefully going to get one. Is everybody good, any other comments?
Sounds good to me.
Okay, great, uh, do you have any, any additional new business at this time, Alderman Astor, Alderman Boyd? Alderman Harris?
No.
I was going to skip.
No, I, but it's been a long night, so I'll just, I'll, I'll delay, thank you all.
I do, I, I do have one comment, and I'm sorry we didn't do this tonight, I apologize to the public, but we should have had a moment of silence tonight for our good friend Congressman Walter P. Dunes, and acknowledge his passing, uh, dedicated congressman to the area, whether you agreed with his politics or not, he was a faithful servant for many years, um, in serving the people of the eastern North Carolina, so I would like to send our deepest condolences to his wife, Joanne, and his daughter, Ashley, and, um, his, in recognition of his service to this district, uh, is well thought of by his colleagues, and I know the mayor and Alderman Odom will be attending the funeral on Thursday, I thank them for representing the city of New Bern, and, um, also too, I wanted to mention the passing of John Graham,